Good evening Board President Bueno, Superintendent Van Shaack, Members of the Board, Cabinet, and Community. My name is Tom Jones and I am the Principal of Jackson Avenue Elementary, home of the Stingrays. I brought a few of my friends today. It is my privilege and honor to recognize members of our student leadership team, affectionately coined our Stingray Leadership Squad, this evening for the positive contributions they make collectively to Jackson Avenue students and staff. At Jackson Avenue, we strive to be Stingray Stars. We are scholarly, trustworthy, accepting, and responsible. Our Stingray Leadership Squad exemplifies these four characteristics, both individually and as a team. Every Wednesday morning, our school comes together to hear important announcements, sing our school song, honor a student from each class being recognized as a Stingray Star, award stuffed tacos for excellent behavior in our cafeteria, hear praise for behavior and reminders of expectations from their principal, that's me, culminating in saying the Pledge of Allegiance together. This togetherness is important to our school culture. Our Stingray Squad has stepped up and joined staff in running our morning meeting each week as they understand and value positive leadership and modeling of expected behavior. They also recognize the importance of celebrating our achievements. Our Stingray Squad leads activities throughout the school year as well. Kindness and positivity were a focus this year with the project appropriately titled "The Kindness Project." Our squad committed to handwriting positive affirmations on clothespins and began randomly clipping them to students' backpacks. Students were excited to see someone thought they were beautiful, or strong, or important. Others were reminded to believe in yourself, told that they are a good friend, or you make me smile. Our squad cares about making a difference for others, which is true service leadership. Holding themselves to a code of conduct is the final point of praise I have for this group this evening. In applying for our squad, students had to explain in writing why they felt qualified to serve, why they wanted to be part of the squad, what their leadership qualities are, and simply tell us a little bit about themselves. They had to prepare both a speech and complete an interview with our teacher advisors who are there this evening. This process resulted in an amazing group of 28 student leaders, many of whom are here this evening, who bring all they have to all of us each day while holding themselves to high levels in order to meet our school-wide expectations. I would like to conclude by saying thank you Stingray Squad. Together, you make a difference.
Good job. I love the clothespins. I have one. Thank you. Good job. Stay involved. Thanks. You guys stay involved. Feel good. You guys are gonna take a picture right there. Thank you. Thanks for all that. Thank you. Great hair. You win the award for best pants. Those are my faves. Thank you. Nice job. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. We gotta tighten it up. Gotta slide over. There we go. Principal's got rabbit ears. Alright. There we go. Thank you. Actually, I grabbed it somewhere because you didn't have one. It bugged me. Alright, we're gonna give them a chance to slide out because I know they're gonna take probably a picture outside in the lobby. And then we'll kind of flex inside for seating. And there might be some folks in the lobby that want to move their way in. We'll give it just a sec. Coffee. Coffee. You can. I think I might see some in there. This'd be a good time to slip in there. Might be. It's okay. For the folks that are in the lobby, we're gonna move some folks in and if folks are on their way out, if you could just kind of clear a path so they can... Yeah, they have strollers and stuff. Thank you very much out there. Alright, we're gonna give folks a chance to come in and get settled in and then we're gonna get going. There we go. A few here. Alright. If we could introduce our next recognition, please.
I will certainly do that. I would like to introduce the very proud Principal of East Avenue, Mr. Jesse Hansen forward, to introduce us to a group of amazing students who he has the good fortune to spend time with every day.
Alright, so. I had to get a few things straight, make sure I wasn't celebrating the wrong awards. So, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. I could not be more proud to be here representing these students. I wish the Jackson Avenue students were still in the room because I wanted to tell them that they're gonna be heading my way and I expect to see them in here again. But I have a group of elite students here. They are some of the best that East Avenue has to offer. And what I decided to do with my student honoring tonight, it seemed like this year, and I've been at East Avenue a few years, every time we had an event, one of my students was winning it this year. I've never had anything like it. If it was an art contest, contest, I came back with someone who won. Science Odyssey, we had winners. Math Counts, Spelling Bee, everything. And so not all of my winners could make it tonight, but these were the folks that were here. They were all honored this year for their academic excellence. And so I just... Lilly, where are you? Lilly, come on. Alright. I just want some of them are a little shy when they're not winning awards. So, I did want to very briefly honor them by name. Lilly Fang came in second place in our district-wide Spelling Bee. Well done, Lilly. I don't think Ruth is here. No Ruth? Oh, Ruth, there you are. Ruth was on, well, was on our first-place sixth-grade math count team. Thank you, Ruth. Addison Lewis won our sixth-through-eighth-grade Science Odyssey logo contest. Addison, well done. Camille was fourth place in our Spelling Bee. Min Ki was not only on our top-sixth-grade math counts team, but was also the second overall sixth grader. Rosiah McKelvey was honored as an African-American Student Achievement and Excellence Award. Anna Stotz was on our top-sixth-grade math count teams and was the first place and best in show in the Science Odyssey for her project "Does CO2 Affect Plant Growth?" I would also quickly like to say the names of Abigail Fung, Alithia Lalas, Rebecca Nelson, and Felicity Nguyen, all who won other awards, music, and other things along those lines. But thank you so much for honoring these young folks. It's been a pleasure to work with them.
Keep going strong. Nice job. Keep going strong. Alright. You're the best.
Can you squeeze in just a little bit? Can you squeeze in just a little bit?
You're out of color. There's no staying on.
Thank you. There we go.
I'm gonna get a little stool wreck. Slide it out. I think we should have a class. Thank you. Girl volleyball. The best. No one takes pictures like them. They're very organized. Thank you. Kids, we prepare for our last one. Yeah. Introduce.
Alright, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Jason Kralikowski. Mr. Kralikowski had the honor and the challenge this year and the anxiety of being the pronouncer... The pronunciator? Pronouncer? Pronouncer? Spell pronouncer. Of the Spelling Bee, which has an enormous amount of responsibility and stress, and did an amazing job. And tonight, he is here to present to you our Spelling Bee Award winners.
Slide him just a little bit. Keep coming. Perfect.
Okay. Good evening, President Bueno, Members of the Board, Superintendent Van Shaack. My name is Jason Kralikowski. I'm Director of Secondary Education. And tonight, I'm pleased to celebrate our student winners of our district Spelling Bee. Many of you were in attendance. We appreciate that always. Students behind me are incredibly talented and gifted. We're just so proud of them. We had our grades four through six on March 15th, and then we had our grades seven and eight on March 29th. So, I'll begin with each school's winners, top three, and we'll acknowledge them and I'll read their names. They'll wave and say hi. And then we'll eventually get to our district Spelling Bee winner. So, to begin, from Altamont Creek, we have Pushkala Krishnan, fourth grade, and Arjun Gourdan for fifth grade. For Royoseko, we had Rachel Rahm for fourth grade and Ruhan Kapoor for fifth grade. For Christensen, we had Aiden Thai and Jack Bonner. At Croche, we had Arjun Patel and Natalie Fang. At East Avenue, we had Min Kai Kawamira, sixth grade, and Camille Marus Bennett, excuse me, Bennett, sixth grade. For Jackson Avenue, we had Cameron Rice and Sanvi Kulcarney, fifth grade. For Joe Mitchell, for fourth grade was Edward Carriell. For fifth grade, excuse me, for fourth grade, for fifth grade was Aaron Ashan. For sixth grade was Jax Blackshack. And for sixth grade, Scarlett Bell. For Junction K8, we had Scott McKay of fourth grade, Aleah Miranda, sixth grade, and Ryan Perez from sixth grade. At Lawrence, we had Alexandra Lugo for fourth grade and Orion Panda, fifth grade. For Maryland Avenue, at fourth grade, we had Alexandria Barbosa. And for fifth grade, Brandon Melina. At Mendenhall, we had Nivedh Panchal for sixth grade and for, and Nimalan Sriwanga Kumar for sixth grade. At Rancho Elementary, for fourth grade, we had Sean Divers and Noga Ohayan for fifth grade. At Smith, Savannah Ramos in fifth grade and Jack Wood in fifth grade. And at Sunset, we had Eva Sunstrom and Kushan Elakinyaki. Now, our seventh and eighth graders. At Christensen, we had Arna Patel, Ragav Singh, and Arya Rajavelu of eighth grade. At East, you've heard one of these names before. Abigail Fung for seventh grade and Lilly Fang, eighth grade. And at Joe Mitchell, we had Anna Wood in seventh grade, Talia Chan in eighth, and then Avery Style in eighth grade as well. All this lead-up, we'll get to our champions in a moment. These are school champions, as a reminder. Our Junction students were Kevin Hernandez in seventh grade, Landy Jones in eighth grade, and Ryan Paradise in eighth grade. At Mendenhall, we had Sarah Henderson in seventh grade, Anne Bui in seventh grade, and Arshita Metall in eighth grade. And the winner of the four-through-six Spelling Bee District Champion is Ruhan Kapoor, fifth grade, Royoseko Elementary School. And for our seventh and eighth grade winner, Arna Patel, eighth grade, Christensen Middle School. Students, go ahead and stay just for a second. We're gonna do some acknowledgements. But obviously, an event like this cannot happen with one person. It was a district-wide effort. It's one of the things we're very happy and proud of here in Livermore. This is just a list of the people who have helped. They were either site coordinators, they contributed in some other way. So again, we want to offer a round of applause for the people on this list. Our officials of the Spelling Bee. I was lucky enough to be the pronouncer. It's my favorite job here in the district. We have, we had our wonderful Director of Elementary, Chris Connor, be our Master of Ceremonies. We had Tracy Christmas, our Director of Student Services, as the recorder. And then our judges, made of administrators and former teachers. We had Sheri Johnston, Holly Ellison, Steve Martin, Roxana Mohammed, and Connie Summers. A little round of applause for that group. And finally, really, there's always one person at the top. It was not me. It was Nancy Walker, our Senior Program Assistant. She did an excellent job, being new on the job, learning about this quickly, and pulled off an excellent event. So we want to make sure we say thank you to Ms. Walker. Once again, we are very proud of all the students who participated, especially the ones who have won. Congratulations, students, and thank you, School Board. Let's go ahead and take some pictures.
Nice job, kids.
Go ahead and walk up and high-five the group.
That's a good spot. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Because I was late, I brought chocolate bars. No. It says that. I don't know if it's for one coming up. I ordered them. I order them on the internet. I get cases of them. I get them on Amazon. I don't know if it's coming up. Yeah, a long time from now.
Six months.
Yeah. How old is chocolate? I don't know.
It can go, it can go a long time.
I don't know. I order them by the case and I put them in the refrigerator. Anytime. We have Godiva and Hershey bars. And Dove. I'd encourage everyone to go ahead and flex into seating that's become available. And as our students file out, we'll begin. Couple minutes here. But there's gonna be some seats up in front that are open. For those folks in the lobby, there's some seats that have opened up, so feel free to come on in and fall into those seats. Alright. We're gonna move into Section Six. Section Six is the opportunity for our student board members to let us know what's going on at each of our two comprehensive high schools, Livermore and Granada, this evening. We're privileged enough to start off with Loudon Filbrick from Granada High School.
Hello?
Yes.
Good evening, Board President Bueno, Members of the Board, Superintendent Van Shaack, Cabinet, and Community. Students are continuing to push through the testing period, challenging themselves with their AP and IB tests. Last Friday, it was Granada's Got Talent, which featured nine different acts. Everyone who participated did an incredible job and put on a great show for the school. And for anyone that wishes to view all of the incredible performances, you can watch them on YouTube at the GHS Studio Broadcast Productions channel. This upcoming Friday, Granada is hosting Matador Bowl, which is a class competition in the form of flag football. The first game is at 4:30 and the other games starting at 5:30 and 6:30. We encourage families to attend the games and support the classes participating. The long-awaited senior ball will take place next Saturday, May 20th, at the San Francisco Exploratorium. And our Disneyland Grad Night trip will be on May 30th. Now regarding sports, Jack Hendrick took first place in the 500 Freestyle at the NCS Swimming Championships. Stefano Matusci took first place in the shot put and discus throws at the E-Ball Track and Field Championships. And our boys team took second overall. Boys volleyball plays in the NCS semifinals against Put Hill tonight. They beat Castro Valley in a thrilling five-set game last week. Girls lacrosse qualified for NCS and played last week, but unfortunately, they lost to Amador. Baseball is starting the E-Ball Championships today versus Cal-Hi. Josh Morano won the Cal-Hi Sports NCS Pitcher of the Year Award. NCS playoffs begin next week. Softball is also starting E-Ball Championships today for San Ramon Valley. Alex Mello won the Cal-Hi Sports Scholar-Athlete of the Year for the spring season. And Delaney Amua won the NCS Softball Player of the Year. Thank you.
You have more? Okay. Yeah, there you go. I had a feeling.
Stay classy, Granada.
I knew there was something missing. Thank you very much. And now to Mackenzie Weary from Livermore High School.
Good evening, Board President Bueno, Members of the Board, Superintendent Van Shaack, Cabinet, and Community. After a busy April, May has brought some calmness to the LHS campus. AP testing season has officially started with testing being conducted every day last week. We hope our bright AP students studied up and aced their exams. Next, an exciting event is coming up. Teacher Appreciation Week. We will honor and appreciate all of our teachers' hard work and we are doing this through gifts, posters, and lots of spirit. And after being postponed, Greek Week is right around the corner. We can't wait to see which students show off their athletic and intellectual... 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 Intellectual abilities during this week in races and games. We are also excitedly able to announce that our brand-new swimming pool is filled up and almost open. Leadership will be hosting the annual Belly Flop Fiesta on Friday, June 2nd, an event in which students will sign up, dress up, and belly flop into our new pool. The crowd will cheer the loudest for the newest belly flop winner. As far as cowboy sports, several of our spring sports seasons have come to an end. Girls softball and boys baseball wrapped up their seasons with some wonderful games against Granada and Dublin. Girls and boys lacrosse both had great seasons and lovely senior nights. Our boys golf team took home the W against Granada in their final match. And through, and though many seasons are coming to a close, some of them are just getting started. Our LHS cheer team just finished hosting tryouts and is looking forward to practicing before the UCA Cheer Camp this summer. And our football season in the fall. And our football teams have also began gearing up for their next season. LHS is looking forward to a wonderful and productive last few weeks of school. Thank you, and remember, today is a great day to be a cowboy.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Our next section is where we hear from the elected leadership of our employee associations. And I believe this evening, we have the President of LEA, Amy Thompson. She's coming on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Board President Bueno, Superintendent Van Schach, members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Amy Thompson, President of the Livermore Education Association, representing teachers, nurses, psychologists, speech pathologists, and teachers on special assignment. The retirement reception is next Wednesday. It is always a bittersweet event, wishing our members well in their new endeavors while saying goodbye. Our members have all felt especially appreciated last week and this week with the teacher appreciation events hosted by PTAs. We value our partnerships with parents to deliver the best possible education for our students. LEA members had the opportunity to participate in the Local Control Accountability Plan Listening Campaign recently. Many important issues were shared, and some surfaced to the top with the rating system that's used by Thought Exchange. We have already started taking action in partnering our members in our district to address issues. We've been actively negotiating for our 23-20 through 26 contract, with four sessions to date, and our fifth session scheduled for this Thursday. Many conversations have been had. A lot of data and information has been shared. We've reached tentative agreements for four articles. We look forward to reaching agreement on the remaining approximately eight articles soon, and we hope to present our member ratified contract to the School Board for a vote before the close of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And in case it went past anyone, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, the 8th through the 12th. So if you can get a big hand for our teachers. Also, I don't believe, it's hard for me to see all the way back, but we also have Eileen Greenlee's here. She's VP of LEA. CSCE leadership is Stephanie Wagner. SEIU is Kirsty Governer. And then we have Lily Lopez, who does our confidential. We're going to move into Section 8. This is Audience Communication. It's the time for the public to comment either in writing or verbally on any item that is not on the agenda. This would be the tan cards. Now, we, the Board, can listen to your comments, and following, we may even ask staff some clarifying questions. But we can neither discuss nor take action at this meeting on topics that are not on the agenda. This is in accordance with the Brown Act. If you would like to address a topic that is not on this evening's agenda, now would be the time to do so. I do have some tan cards up here. We ask, again, for the folks who might not have heard or may be coming a minute late, three minutes on the comments. You'll get a little timer, and I believe when you get right down to the end, I think 30 seconds comes up on the boards. And I may remind you at that, excuse me, I may remind you at that point that you're on your time. And for the audience members, because we want to capture, I'll make sure that your mic's on before we start you. And then once you get going, if we could make sure, we want to be able to hear folks. So whether we agree or disagree, we want to hear who's talking. And each of you has your opportunity to come up. So just be polite, and there's not a bunch of background noise or anything, so that we can actually hear and we can move through it. And the folks that are watching, too, want to be able to capture it. So we want to get video and audio on both. So thank you very much. And what I'm going to do, when we get stacked cards like this, there's quite a few, I'll tell you who's coming up next, so the person can kind of assemble and help us get through them expeditiously. Our first one is Van Rainey. Just come up, let us know your name, make sure I got it right, sir, as each person comes up. On deck is Alex Izades. Good evening, sir. There's a button right in the middle of the platform. You're on.
All right, thank you, President Bueno, and members of the Board, Superintendent Van Schach. I'm here to announce that there was a report that was issued on April 21st from the California Ready, or Climate Ready Schools Coalition. And they issued a relatively lengthy but surprisingly concise report on how schools could prepare for the climate change issues that we have to confront in the future. And it had a lot of recommendations in it that I think would be valuable for the school district to pay attention to and to move forward on. And so I would ask a few things of the Board. One is that if you haven't seen this report, get a copy of it by going to climateradyschoolscoalition.org. Second, I'd like, in future considerations of bond measures, that the Board seriously consider some of the recommendations that are issued in this report. Third, I would like the Board to consider consulting with East Bay Community Energy, the energy provider for the city of Livermore, to find out if there's any way that they can support these kinds of efforts and infrastructure improvements via their local development business plan. And then fourth, I'd like you to consider talking to local legislators on how they may be able to initiate school funding for these kinds of actions that are recommended in the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up now is Alex Izades, and on deck is Trenton Thompson.
Come on? Okay.
You're on.
Good evening, Board. Our last Board meeting, parent after parent, came to speak to the Board about our concerns for parental rights and the well-being of our children. Many parents came asking for the matter to be put on this week's agenda, but it was disappointing when we see that nothing of this matter is here, almost as if every parent's request was ignored. If, in fact, asking was not the right way to get something put on the agenda, why not reach out to a parent and let them know the correct way? I did reach out to our Board. Trustee Pruso advised me to email Board President Bueno, who ignored me. I'm not surprised, honestly, as I have been ignored by our district before. It seems if you disagree with the norm, go against the grain, dare to speak out, the district wants nothing to do with you. When emailing with our superintendent a few weeks ago, I was excited to try to make change in our district in partnership with him. However, the minute we came to him with problems, like a teacher calling a parent horrible names, he said, and I quote, "I will reach out to our employees to encourage a different type of response, but in addition to being our employees, they are also citizens and have the right to voice their opinions. I hope that you will reach out to parents who see you as a leader and encourage them to take a more appropriate approach as well," end quote. Equating a teacher calling a parent profanities on a public platform and parents voicing their concerns for their children's education are two different things. Encouraging me to basically call off parents is a bit ridiculous. These parents are here taking time out of their nights, away from their families, to sit, speak, and listen. They are concerned parents wanting to be involved in their children's lives, wanting to be a part of the conversation. Parental involvement is not a bad word. It is actually a part of your Board policy. Board Policy 6020 states, "The Board of Education recognizes that parents, guardians, are their children's first and most influential teachers, and that sustained parent/guardian involvement in the education of their children contributes greatly to student achievement and a positive school environment. The superintendent or designee shall work with parents, guardians, and family members to jointly develop and agree upon policy and strategies to meaningfully involve parents and guardians and family members in district and school activities at all grade levels, advisory decision-making and advocacy roles, and activities to support learning at home. As parents, we are asking the Board to notify a parent within three days if a child identifies as something other than their biological gender. Until you have had a mother cry to you because their child no longer wants to identify as the beautiful person God made them to be, a mother cried to you because their child is lost in gender confusion caused by teachers doing this behind a mother's back, you have no idea. You have no idea what parents who are affirming of their children are going through because adults are pressuring them into being something they are not. I do know that pain. I hear the cries of our parents, and all I can do is pray our Board starts listening to the concerns of parents rather than special interest groups." Thank you to each parent in this boardroom, wanting to stand for parental rights and wanting to stand for truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Trenton Thompson. Trenton Thompson, and on deck is James Grippy. Good evening.
Good evening.
Make sure it's close enough to you, see if we can hear you. It's pretty sensitive. You're about three inches away.
Okay. Is this good? Yeah? Okay. Members of the Board, President, or Superintendent Chris Van Schach, President Bueno, and members of our community. My name is Trenton Thompson, and I am a junior at Granada High School. Watching political extremists ask you to adopt AB 1314, which forces teachers to alert parents about their student's identity, is shameful and hurtful. While parents should know about their kid's identity, it is not up to the schools to inform parents. That is between you and your children if they feel you are a safe person to come out to. These people clearly do not know what school is like anymore. If you do not know and spend your days on LVJUSD schools, why are you speaking on issues on these campuses? I see it on an everyday basis that hate speech being spread around schools in this district. This language would only cause more hurt and anguish among students. While these extremists may want you to spend taxpayer money on discussing a bill that would violate California Ed Code and our federally protected rights, I would rather discuss other things. The Trevor Project just released their 2023 LGBTQ youth mental health survey, and I wanted to share with you some of their results. Nearly two in three LGBTQ young people said that hearing about potential state or local laws banning people from discussing LGBTQ people at school made their mental health a lot worse. That is a national survey, but as a queer student at LVJUSD, these extremists are making my friends and I feel unsafe and unwelcome in our community. When hate speech or discrimination arise on campus, oftentimes, teachers are left powerless. In recent years, teachers' abilities to address behavior in the classroom has been diminished. Give back the power to teachers to address issues in the classroom and give them training on how to handle the discrimination and hate speech in their classrooms. Do not expect them to know how to do it properly without guidance and support from you all. I ask you all to individually reaffirm your commitment to queer students in this district and state that you fully support and will defend our rights in this district. Add a diversity, equity, and inclusion statement on every LVJUSD website like other tri-valley districts have done. Give students a larger voice. Students want and can do more, so give them the voice they need to actually make change in this district. Add students to your committees and listen to their opinions and experiences to make this place a better and safer place for all students. Thank you.
James Grippy. And coming up is Megan Trant.
Bravo. As the Board seems to have ignored many parent requests to have this item added to tonight's agenda, I will respectfully ask again that the Board adopt into policy language that states that a parent or a guardian has the right to be notified in writing within three days from the date any teacher, counselor, or employee at a school becomes aware that a pupil is identifying at school as a gender that is not in line with the child's sex on their official records. Why? Because kids are too young to make this kind of a decision, just as though they aren't mature enough to take care of a baby. Would you be okay if your 12-year-old daughter came to you and said, "I'm ready to have a baby"? I don't think so. My kid, my choice, not yours. Just as Alex just stated, how is this Board working with any parents that have opposing views? You're just ignoring us, and we're not going to continue to be ignored. We're going to keep coming. On a different note, in November, the district was unable to get a bond measure passed and is now trying to get a new bond passed. But what you might not know is that because they know they have a poor reputation, the school district has a poor reputation, we already know that, they are trying to partner up with the Livermore Parks and Rec. This should be completely off the table, especially even since the LARPD Board Chair, Mr. James Boswell, stated, and I quote, "I'm concerned about us ponying up to the bar with people that can't manage their money," Boswell said. "I'm concerned about stepping up to the plate, doing a bond, just because we're wrapping on the outside they can't get something approved." So what is the Board doing with their money? You keep making poor choices. You're continuing to divide parents instead of bringing us together to find solutions. You're trying to give kids the opportunity to make decisions that they're way too young to make. So when are you going to start working with us? I'll take an email, Van Schach.
Next speaker is Megan Trant, and on deck is Laney Pascal.
Good evening, members of the Board and President Bueno. My name's Megan Trant, and I am tired. I am tired of education, teachers, and LGBTQ youth being attacked by the very extremist group that continues to degrade and bully members of this community, meeting after meeting. I am here to support LGBTQ youth, education, programs, resources, clubs, expression, and whatever else it will take to give these kids the safest environment possible. I am a proud parent of three children in the Livermore District and a mother of an LGBTQ child, so I'm speaking on behalf of my children and those of us who support LGBTQ humans. Not allowing safe spaces where these kids will kill kids, it will force them back into the closet, it will take away their voice and who they are as humans. Those demanding to take away resources or safe places for these kids will continue to contribute to diminish their existence and damage their mental health. I would like the Board to know that the majority of us support LGBTQ youth, and we stand together against bills like AB 1314. There has been some serious accusations towards those of us who support LGBTQ, excuse me, accusations of grooming and pedophilia, comparing LGBTQ kids and their rights to bestiality, accusations of indoctrinating. Those of us who stand by our LGBTQ youth are not actively working to tear down others' religions, beliefs, or identities. We are simply fighting for people to exist and want our kids to exist without being attacked. Acknowledging the existence of those who are LGBTQ, giving them space to have the freedom to be themselves, and to have support on campus is not indoctrination. Those I oppose today are trying to force people to live by their standards and their rules without any empathy or consideration of how their actions will affect these kids and the consequences that will follow. This is not protecting kids, it's harming them. Adopting something like AB 1314 takes away the opportunity to feel safe and removes an environment that will support them. These kids are real, they exist, and taking away their resources that they desperately need will have consequences. It's not okay to tell others how to live their lives or what education material they should be getting. This includes the need to ban books. If you don't want your child to read something, then that's fine, but don't read it. But you do not get to tell me what's appropriate or not appropriate for my child to read. So I'm here to ask the Board not to adopt any of these extreme, harmful, horrifying bills, but to instead continue providing support to our LGBTQ youth. It is time to allow people to live their lives and exist without being punished or forced to hide who they are. Nobody is forcing anybody at school to participate in LGBTQ discussions. A child's pronouns or gender identity does not affect anyone else. We are all different, and it's time to progress, embrace each other, and embrace our differences, continue providing safe space for these kids. And now, this is the second time I've had to come up here and take action against those who've come after my children directly, the first time being when we had to fight against their anti-mass rhetoric. So you better believe I will be here to fight every step of the way. Thank you.
Next up is Laney Pascal with Mark Thompson on deck.
Good evening, Board members and staff, community members, parents, and those who are at home. My name is Laney Pascal, and I'm the parent of a 5th grade student in the district, and I'm here in support of our LGBTQ students. I'm here specifically because I'm here to oppose any further action by the Board about this failed Assembly Bill that would compel schools to notify parents or guardians if their student is identifying as transgender at school. So this is a failed bill. It never made it out of committee. And there are some very compelling arguments about the very real harm that enacting this into district policy would do to students. But notwithstanding that argument, the fact is that it violates existing state law. So AB 1266, which was enacted almost a decade ago, protects our transgender students at school. And if anyone wants to Google "California AB 1266 FAQs," and you scroll down to number six, basically, this was enacted almost a decade ago, like I said, and it guarantees students the right to use school facilities like bathrooms and locker rooms, and participate in school sports, programs, and activities that align with their gender identity. So this is already codified in California state law. And in those FAQs about this state law, number six, "May a student's gender identity be shared with the student's parents?" The short answer is no. It may not. Schools may not disclose that in any situation, well, in most situations, unless there's an issue of harm or a threat to self-harm. But it's pretty clear that this is actually- But it's pretty clear that this is actually not allowed by law. So all of this that parents are asking for, it's a moot point, and it's a waste of board time. And of course, this is a smokescreen, because it's not about the books, it's not about parental rights, it's about vilifying our LGBTQ students, it's about making our schools less safe for them. And I'm here, other folks are here, because we refuse to allow this small group of community members to use our district and to use this board as a platform for bullying our LGBTQ students. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. We have Mark Thomas?
Thomas.
Thomas, okay, I'm sorry. Say it properly when you come up, sir. And on deck is Erin Haycraft.
Oh, it's on? Perfect. I just really wanted to come to support the LGBTQ youth, because I keep seeing these meetings online, and constantly they're attacking these kids they don't even know, they don't even have kids in the district. And just a cursory Google glance or Google search will show you the amount of kids that are killed by their parents when they find out these things about them. These kids don't tell their parents because they know it's not safe. And then just having someone else out them, this is an attempt, like I said, it's a smokescreen to try to get kids to not go to school, so they can have this tiny little normative environment that only speaks to what they believe in, and it's just not how the world works. There are so many different kinds of people, and we have to make room for everyone, we have to make room for different opinions, we have to make room for different things. And just seeing this group of people being vilified for no reason other than existing reminds me of a part of our history which also wasn't so great and so bright that we don't like talking about now, and I just hate to see it happening again. And I want to say thank you to the board for not entertaining these people who want to oppress people they don't even know simply because they're different. I want to say that I've seen you guys do a lot of good stuff, I've been watching these meetings for a while, and the way you have stood up to reason and the way you have stood up to people who just simply want to tear people down because they're different is impressive, as you have consistently done that. And I want to say thank you for doing what you're doing, for fighting against the people who are trying to limit our access to resources and to the environment around us and to just basically being alive. I want to say thank you for protecting them, and I hope you continue to do so. Thank you.
We have Erin Haycraft, and on deck is Heidi Morrison.
Can you correct me if it's Haycraft or Haycroft? Oh, it's Haycraft, just like arts and crafts. It's basically the word hay and then word craft, and it's like arts and crafts.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm that kind of gay, but I do not do arts and crafts. Anyways, all right. So, good evening Superintendent Vancheck, President Bueno, and esteemed school board members. Okay, this is very intimidating. I'm not sure how y'all feel about this, but this is very intimidating being up here. And I know that while I do not necessarily agree with some of the folks behind me, I also know that I respect them as well, because it takes a lot of courage to do this. So obviously, AB 1314 has been discussed a lot in the past couple of meetings and stuff, and so I'm not going to necessarily go too much into that. It's rough to hear. The bill looks great on the surface, I have to admit. I did read the bill, and the facts that they use are correct, that there are a lot of trans youth that do attempt to commit suicide, they think of suicide, and they need parental support. But the problem is, requiring kids to be outed would not, it's just not a good thing. My mom, as an office clerk in a middle school, at the time, had a student who was trans. The student was not supported by their parents. So what my mom did was, my mom, they had their attendance database system, whatever that could use, and basically my mom tried to put it in there such that it was like a nickname, and that way with the gender, so that way the student could be identified as such. When that happened, obviously, the entire staff was supportive. Unfortunately, it kind of slipped during a parent-teacher conference, they used the wrong name, wrong pronoun, and the parents got very upset, because the parents did not agree with their decision. My mom showed a lot of grace, humanity, and love when she spoke with the student and with the parents and trying to deal with them. I'm not going to mention 1266, because it's already been done, but there was another one of my compatriots in the back who did give me some stuff to kind of work with, so I'd like to go ahead and kind of read those questions and just kind of probing questions. So I'm not saying the board would, but for example, "Who would assess what are acceptable gendered expectations that align with sex listed on the birth certificate? Will there be a list of acceptable names for those identified as male at birth, and another list for those identified as female? For example, if a person's named Stephanie but asked to be called Steph, Steve, or Stevie, would it be reported? Would there be a list of hairstyles, makeup, jewelry that's appropriate for each gender?" And so by passing legislation like this, it allows the school district to become our children's next bully, outing them in ways they did not consent to, and creating one more space they feel afraid to exist. At what point will we realize that we are spending too much time policing what our kids do in schools instead of educating them and keeping them safe? And so back to 1266, that's from the pupil rights. So pupils have rights too, I mean, all of us have rights. And that's not just the parents, not all of you as board members, but the students. Thank you. The students have pupil rights as well, so that's just kind of something to keep in mind. So also, not sure if it's possible to still get on that book review panel that I know was spoken about a couple months ago, kind of interested in that, so if that's possible, I'd like to talk with somebody later. But otherwise, thank you so much. Remember, love always wins. Keep your feet on the ground and keep reaching for the stars. Thank you.
We have Heidi Morrison, and on deck, Aiden Morrison.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak to the board and the community. As a parent, a community member, and a teacher in a neighboring district, I am aware of the issues that are impacting all the sides of this issue of AB, Bill AB 1314, and the request that members of the community are bringing it to the attention of the board. I'd like to consider, however, the purpose of the school district, which is educating its students. And as a teacher, I'd also like to reflect on my teaching and understanding that going with educating students is understanding the importance of safety in the classroom and establishing a safe environment for my students. Safety, which includes emotional safety and providing a safe environment in which they Safety is paramount to the learning process. If a student does not feel safe in their environment, it impedes their process to learn. And safety also includes being able to be their most authentic self and being able to identify themselves in so many different ways, including their gender identity, but not limited to that. I believe that we all want our students to be successful and to be learning and growing every year as they progress through the school system. Let's keep that in the forefront of the purpose of the school district, and let's help move our students forward in their achievement.
We have Aiden Morrison, and on deck, Ihara Hepting. Go ahead and hit the button on the podium. There you go, you're on, and about three to four inches away.
Hello, hello.
Here we go.
Hello, members of the board. My name's Aiden, I'm a former Granada student, class of 2013. And I'm here today to kind of speak to you all about AB 1314, which I feel uses incredibly divisive language. There's a lot of rhetoric going on that transgenderism is contagious, and the only thing contagious about it is if you get too close to my business. I am a very proud queer person, and I wanted to use tonight as an opportunity to utilize my choice to let you all know that I am non-binary. And that was my choice to share with you all. And I feel as though the language being thrown around that parents need to be involved, while it's excellent, I would love to see parents involved in the lives of their children. I had incredibly involved parents, and I'm very happy to call them my parents, but I don't ever feel like they could have been less involved. They were always involved in my life, and I felt as though if they cared, they would be involved. And the business of another student being in Granada, if you were in my posse, I knew what was going on in your life. If I wanted to know, I would know, and if you wanted me to know, you would tell me. But I feel as though alerting parents to subjects that are more concerned in the student body isn't necessarily going to change anything, but perhaps fuel more hatred outside of a school system. It's its own social ladder, it's its own social biome. You're going to see students getting along, you're going to hear about a lot of students not getting along, because we did not get along all the time. But I feel as though if we were to entertain this conversation that the business of transgender and queer individuals needs to be broadcasted amongst a lot of people, you take away from me what I've done with you tonight, which is my freedom to be 27-years-old and come out. I never felt the need to come out, because it's always been integral to my identity to be gender-adjacent, but I feel as though it should have always been my choice at 27 to decide to tell you all that.
Thirty seconds.
And I would highly encourage all of you to allow your student bodies to do the same to their friends, family, and their own social community. And that's all, this is my little flag.
We have Ihara Hepting. Hagar? Please, please correct me when you come up. Inara Hepting?
Inara.
And then Caroline Bader Hepting is on deck. Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Inara Hepting, and I am a student right now at Vineyard, though I used to go to Granada and transferred recently. I am a junior, and I'm friends with a lot of the queer kids in our community, and I'm friends with many of them who do not have supportive parents, and some of them who have not told their parents because they will not be supportive. And to the school board, I would like to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for not considering it, or at least seemingly not considering this bill, because it would harm a lot of people that I love, and that is a problem. And to the parents, I would like to clarify that this is specifically coming from me, so don't generalize us as a community, this is coming from me, but I know a lot of who may be your children, and while they love you, they don't like you. You are making your kids not want to be around you, and so don't expect wonderful treatment when you're older if this is how you expect them to behave and you won't accept anything else. If you refuse to accept your kid for who they are, but you want to know regardless so you can change them back to who they were, then they are probably not going to like you. And that's kind of just the hard truth of it. I know a lot of these kids, and they don't really like their parents specifically for that fact. They love you, but they don't like you. And I'm sorry, but that's something you might need to work on. That's it.
We have Carolyn Bader Hepting. On deck is Finnegan Butterfield.
Hi there. That was my kid. Isn't she great? I just wanted to say, please do not adopt, what is it, AB 1314. In my view, our teachers, and I don't think it's just me, our teachers are there to teach our children, period. They're not there to be spies or informants for the parents. So, you know, why don't we just let them do their job, which is to teach the children? Amen. That's it.
Finnegan Butterfield, and on deck, Nancy Denbreyder.
It's on? I don't need to push the button?
You're good.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Finnegan Butterfield, I'm 28-years-old, I am an alumni from Granada High School from 2013. I identify as transgender, and I have done so since I was 12-years-old. Not only am I opposed to AB 1314, I am exhausted with its rhetoric. This bill protects no one, but instead targets and harms those that its intent on singling out. As someone with a bachelor's degree in literature from CSU East Bay with a concentration in queer studies, I can promise you, trans youth and trans people are not new. Trans people have existed long before our current gender constructs and roles were established in society. This bill does nothing but target a fragile, small demographic of children who are not harming anyone, especially not your children. These kids face discrimination in society when they see these bills that alienate them as predators, dangerous to societies, and outcast. Again, we are talking about children. Not only this, but several of these children face discrimination and violence at home because of how they identify. Out of the homeless youth population in America, four out of five, every homeless adolescent belongs to the LGBT community. Out of the entire American youth population, trans kids are 45% more likely to attempt self-harm than their cisgender counterparts. If you're in favor of this bill, my feelings will likely not matter to you, so let me appeal to your feelings then. You feel it's your duty as a parent to protect your children, but against what? Do you know what is the leading cause of harm to children in this country? It's not trans people, it's guns. We have had 22 mass shootings this year alone, which means 17% of this year has had a mass shooting, contrastes to the percentage of trans people in the United States, which is a very low 1.4%. You are worried about a non-issue. No one is going to turn your child trans. No one manipulates your child into changing their gender. These are not things that happen. But speaking from experience, when a parent holds this mindset that being trans is dangerous or wrong, they turn their children against them. If your child is crying to you because they are grappling with their identity, it's not because they're confused by society, it's because they are afraid you are going to hate them. That child now knows your love is conditional, your support is limited, and that trust is not something they can afford to give you. If you took the time to educate yourself, you would know that child is not coming to you to ask for medical intervention, but for the continuance of your love. At the very least, in your crusade to protect children, you are actively putting someone else's in harm's way. Thank you.
We have Nancy Denbreyder, and on deck, Alexander Pepper.
It's on?
Yes, it is.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having this possibility for us to get up and talk. I'm absolutely thrilled to be here. I'm a proud mother of an adult gay man, could not be more proud of who he is as a person and what he has added to the world and what he will continue to. And I just want to be really brief, because I tell you, some of these speakers have been amazing, they've all been amazing, actually, and they can say things much better than me. I just simply wanted to be here to support the LGBTQ+ community in Livermore, and especially our students here, because every student deserves respect and an equal opportunity. And I wanted to thank the school district too. I got on your website and looked at your core values, and one being a safe and inclusive environment for all students, and I really appreciate that, and I thank you for that. I know that's probably not an easy thing to uphold with everything else in the picture. But I love what we heard from the Jackson Elementary students, that kindness does matter. And I think all people need to look at that a little bit more and live their lives like that. And I simply wanted to let the LGBTQ+ community, these students right here, I want you to know, I got your back. I'm here, I got my little flag too. I'll come back if need be, because it matters. Every student matters, and every difference matters, and there are so many differences in the world. This is just one, right? There's so many. We need to be just kind and accepting of all people. So I thank you for your time, and I too have a little flag.
We have Alexander Pepper, and on deck, Kai Sexton. We have Alexandra Pepper and on deck Kai Sexton.
I can't get it to stand up. I tried. Esteemed trustees, president and superintendent, I've come here before to speak on behalf of myself and my peers and to voice my concerns as a student of Grenada High School. I hope to make my point shorter this time, although I cannot say they will be sweet. There has been a lot of discussion on the specific bills today, but I want to reach the root of the problem, the hateful and anti-LGBTQ group present here. The current attacks against my LGBTQ peers from certain members of this audience, however disguised, are simply prejudiced lies. They represent the belief that they should solely have the right to dictate mine and others' education. They discount us, the students, and show no among their number. They attack the educators who have actually taken steps to protect and help myself and my peers, including many of you on the board today. They say my kid, my choice, I say my gender, my choice. What legitimacy do those who claim, do those who speak against myself and against my peers claim? What qualifications do they hold to assume they can discount the opinions of those that oppose their beliefs? I would trust the opinion of a doctor over that of a parent for medical advice and as such, I trust the knowledge of my educators rather than those of parents from my education. You will hear them claim the majority, but as evidenced by their group's rather poor performance in the recent school board election, that claim is clearly untrue. I am sure they will claim hypocritically that I am attacking their free speech. But just as they exercise their freedom of speech to attack my LGBTQ friends, I exercise mine to simply point out their malice lies. I say this to the board to remind them that they were elected by the people, many of the people who have come today as allies of the LGBTQ community, including myself. Do not be intimidated by the hateful rhetoric that is often present in these boardrooms. Instead, remember that you were elected by us, not by them. Thank you for thus far for your opposition to the hate speech and please continue to be allies towards the LGBTQ community and all of my fellow students. Thank you everyone who came today to show support to the LGBTQ plus community and to show that acceptance is the majority, not hate. Thank you.
Next up is Kai Sexton and Lori Day.
My name is Kai Sexton. I'm a freshman at Grenada High School and I use he/him pronouns. I've attended Livermore schools for my whole life and for the most part, I enjoyed it. I came out as a transgender man in middle school when I attended Menon Hall. Right away, I experienced hate and bullying from my peers as well as people I believed to be my friends. It got to the point where I felt unsafe on campus, but luckily I could transfer schools. During those times, my mental health declined severely. I felt alone. I felt like nobody would care if I died. In September of 2021, I spent time in a hospital to monitor my mental health. After that, I started gender-affirming care. I was able to start testosterone. I was finally able to be myself. I'm one of the lucky ones. I had access to care like endocrinologists and HRT. Unfortunately, I know many people who are not in the same place. If they were to be outed to their parents, they would be kicked out, abused, or maybe even take their own lives. I truly believe that letting students be out at school and giving them that safe space they lack at home can be lifesaving. Only 40% of LGBTQ plus youth in the US live in supportive households. That leaves the other 60% to hide and be forced to not be themselves. 41% of LGBTQ plus youth have seriously considered suicide in the past year. For many people, schools are their only safe place. I've heard some things said recently that worry me. As a student of the school district, I beg you to put yourself in the shoes of an LGBTQ plus student in an unsupportive household. There are students in our community who felt scared to be themselves. Their own bodies feel like prisons, but school is a key to an escape. At school, they can be out, they can be safer. Of course, there are uneducated people who bully and harass LGBTQ plus students, but there's also a community of queer students to lean on. If there's one thing our community should remember, it is that being LGBTQ plus is not a choice. It's not something you can force on somebody and make them gay. It's who you are. My hope for the world and specifically our school district is that we will continue on the path of improvement. We will think of the students and their well-being and we will remember something that we learned in elementary school. Treat others the way you want to be treated. Talk to others the way you want to be talked to. Thank you for your time.
We have Lori Day and Bob Johnson on deck.
Good evening, President, Board President Bueno, Members of the Board, Superintendent Van Shaack, Cabinet and Community. My name is Lori Day and I'm a retired teacher from this district, a proud retired teacher. I have been disappointed to hear some of the issues the district is facing regarding banned books, limiting classroom discussions in classrooms, and the treatment of LGBTQ plus people in our schools. I taught the primary grades and enjoyed reading books and having discussions about them. Books about families produced delightful conversations between students like, well, I have two moms. Me too. I have a stepmom and my mom. Oh, he has two dads. My grandparents take care of me. Mother's Day and Father's Day had many kids making more than one present. The children accepted that families were full of people that loved them and then they went out and played together at recess. It's the parents that teach the children to think differently at home. We need to recognize and embrace diversity, get to know people of other races and cultures than our own, get to know LGBTQ folks. We need to find commonalities and broaden our thinking. Diversity makes the world go round and I, as a Christian, believe that God wants us to treat others as we would have them treat us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bob Johnson and on deck is Victor Schwartz.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent, Members of the Cabinet, Members of the community that are here. I'm a 34-year resident of Livermore. I have two adult children who are graduates of Livermore High. I had a lot of interaction through the years with the schools. My first born started kindergarten in 1996. We had a bit of a gap between kids and so my youngest just graduated in 2020. I also have a little bit of additional perspective perhaps because a few years ago, I retired after 19 years with the California School Employees Association, CSEA, as a staff member. Being a classified school employee, being a teacher, being an administrator, I appreciate it as a very difficult job and I thank you all for what you do. I want to thank the board. It's a thankless job and not easy to be here as a board member. And thank you for your patience in listening to the public comments. I want to particularly commend the students who have had the courage to speak up tonight and express their concerns and also their hopes for a safe environment as members of the LGBTQ plus community. I'm an old guy, obviously, but I can still remember it wasn't easy being a student and particularly wasn't easy in middle school or high school. And so anything we can do to relieve the stress that students face, especially for members of the LGBTQ plus community, so that they may have a safe environment, a supportive environment, a loving environment, so they can be students first and not have to come to school in fear, not to be treated differently, but just treated as kids because that's who they are. And so I encourage you to continue whatever you're doing now to provide a loving, safe environment at school and to look at whatever else you might be able to do to improve and do even more so that every student feels loved, feels safe, feels supported, and have the opportunity to reach their best potential. Thank you.
We now have Victor Schwartz and on deck Emily Wilson.
Good evening, President Board Bueno, Members of the Board, Superintendent Van Shaack and Cabinet. I'm Victor Schwartz, I'm a junior at Grenada High School and I'm the president of the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. You may remember that I spoke previously at the school board meeting, at the school board meeting, I spoke regarding the hatred that has been experienced by LGBTQ students such as myself and how many of the adults in this room are furthering the cycle of bigotry that we see in our schools. I've noticed that an issue that needs to be addressed further is the fact that students are struggling to speak freely at some of these meetings as a result of intimidation. The day after I spoke at that school board meeting on March 21st, 2023, one of the hateful people at this meeting decided to post my speech to their public Instagram page in which the video contained my name, my school, and other factors that would make people easily able to find out who I am and potentially harm me. Of course, this worried my family and my friends because I am a student and I'm a minor. The major issue here is that students can't speak freely at school board meetings without a fear of being potentially harmed. That's ridiculous. School board meetings exist so you can make the best decisions for students and you cannot do that if you can't hear the voices of students. The people in this room who make homophobic and transphobic remarks are trying to take away me and my classmates' rights to an accurate education. These adults do not know what's best for my classmates and are here to purely bolster their problematic beliefs on LGBTQ plus students. The comment section contained even more hateful material, which I have taken screenshots of if you'd like them. One comment went as far to say that laws that imprison and give LGBTQ plus people the death penalty, and I quote, "perhaps have the right idea." I wouldn't be surprised if that person who wrote that comment is in this audience today. Overall, the fact that some of these people are even allowed to speak at these meetings is an absolute disgrace to our students. Oh, not to mention the lady who made the original post was placed on a committee for choosing books for our libraries where she focuses on oppressing LGBTQ plus students. Do you think that this is showing how accepting our school district is where we allow bigots to make decisions for students and our students can't speak freely at board meetings? Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Emily Wilson and on deck is Royanne Heath.
Good evening, Board President Bueno, Board Members, Superintendent Van Shaack, Cabinet and our community. My name is Emily Wilson and I am once again speaking tonight to support our LGBTQ plus community. The Trevor Project released their 2023 US national survey on the mental health of LGBTQ young people, which amplifies the experiences of more than 28,000 LGBTQ young people ages 13 to 24 across the United States. Here are some of their key findings. 41% of young people seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year and young people who are transgender, non-binary, and/or people of color reported higher rates than their peers. 56% of LGBTQ young people who wanted mental health care in the past year were not able to get it. Transgender and non-binary young people who reported that all of the people they live with respect their pronouns, reported lower rates of attempting suicide. Fewer than 40% of LGBTQ young people found their home to be LGBTQ-affirming. Roughly half of transgender and non-binary young people found their school to be gender-affirming and those who did reported lower rates of attempting suicide. A majority of LGBTQ young people reported being verbally harassed at school because people thought they were LGBTQ. Nearly 1 in 3 LGBTQ young people said that their mental health was poor most of the time or always due to anti-LGBTQ policies and legislation. Nearly 2 in 3 LGBTQ young people said that hearing about potential state or local laws banning people from discussing LGBTQ people at school made their mental health a lot worse. 41% of young people seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, including half of transgender and non-binary young people. 14% of LGBTQ young people attempted suicide in the past year, including nearly 1 in 5 transgender and non-binary young people. This is about saving lives. I deeply appreciate the support from the school board and district and hope we continue to support our queer community at LVJUSD. I am requesting that the board affirms current laws that protect trans and queer students, oppose AB 1314 in any language that would put LGBTQ students in danger, and keep pushing for tolerance, inclusivity, and acceptance as literal lives are at stake. Community, I ask that we continue to stand together to change the culture in our schools and in these meetings. There is power in the people. Let's move forward together. Thank you all for caring and for your time. We are a misunderstood community, but we deserve love, respect, and the right to live.
We have Royanne Heath and on deck is Kristin Hertz.
Do I have to push the button?
You're good. Nope. There you go.
Now I'm good?
Perfect. Just get a little proximity, try to get a little closer to it. You can pull it towards you also.
Is that better?
Perfect.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight and good evening to all the board and as well as the community. I am the president of PFLAG Tri-Valley, which is an advocacy and support group for the LGBTQ plus community, family and friends. We are a local chapter of PFLAG National, whose mission statement is to create a caring, just, and affirming world for the LGBTQ plus people and those who love them. If anybody would like, I do have some cards. Little plug. I have recently watched the last three board meetings online and was appalled by the anti-LGBTQ rhetoric I was hearing. I have always been an ally of the LGBTQ plus community. This became more important to me when I found out my son is gay. I have lived in Livermore for 32 years and raised two children. My son graduated in 2008 from Livermore High and it saddens me that people would hate and judge him based on who he loves without getting to know him. He did not choose to be gay. He knew from the time he was in middle school, however, did not come out to us until he was a senior in high school for fear of our reaction or rejection. He read so many stories of LGBTQ plus youth not having support from their families and being kicked out of their homes. Luckily for my son, that was not his case. His father and I love him unconditionally. When he first came out as gay, my main concern was for his safety. I thought of Matthew Shepard, whom in 1998 was beaten and left for dead just because he was gay. I know that all parents can relate and all of them in this room, that we all want our kids to feel safe and be safe. I am concerned when I hear that parents say that the laws to protect the LGBTQ plus students in schools, providing gender-neutral bathrooms, access to books in the library, displaying flags, discussions on gender, being inclusive is somehow indoctrinating kids to become part of the LGBTQ plus community. Being part of the LGBTQ plus community is not a choice. I also have heard that people are asking the school board to adopt AB 1314, which has not passed at the state level. This bill, if passed, would be detrimental to our transgender youth. Not all children have a supportive, accepting family and may turn to another adult that they feel safe with and can talk to. A lot of times, this is a teacher, counselor, administrator at their school. This will lead to more isolation for transgender youth and possibly an even higher suicide rate. I also had the same probably statistics that have already been read, so I'm not going to read the statistics on suicide again. I no longer have children in the school district, however, it is important to me that the community I live in is welcoming of all LGBTQ plus members and that our LGBTQ plus youth feel safe and can be their authentic self without fear of harassment and harm. Thank you.
We have Kristin Hertz followed by Mary Perner.
Thank you for having us here tonight. It's hard to watch and listen as rights are eroding in the US and people feel empowered to hate and threaten people who are not like them. Our current education code states, California code, states that the mental health treatment of counseling of a minor should include the involvement of the minor's parent or guardian unless, in the opinion of the professional person who is treating or counseling the minor, the involvement would be inappropriate. This is exactly how it should be and should be how it should remain. The changes proposed in AB 1314 not only threaten the health and safety of a targeted group of children, it creates a rift in our teachers' ability to form trusting relationships with our children. Teachers are indeed a critical part of our children's growth into adulthood. They do not need more barriers to their ability to do what they are professionally trained to do. I thoroughly enjoy hearing the stories that my children share with me about the interactions with their teachers. In these stories, it is clear that the teachers are passionate about their work and the relationships they have with their students. As a parent, I work hard to form a trusting relationship with my children and have hopefully instilled in them a strong foundation to establish supportive- instilled in them a strong foundation to establish supportive relationships with the adults in their lives. If they choose to go with them to them with information they're not comfortable talking to me about, I am just thankful that they have found someone to talk to and guide them. I do not want a code or a law to take this away from them. The American Academy of Pediatrics has stated that gender-affirming care increases both the mental and physical health of gender non-conforming children. This is evidence-based conclusion that shows how being accepted and treated as the person you are and are born to be is critical to the mental health of our children. If the child's home does not provide that loving and safe environment, mandating the notification of parents to children's very appropriate behavior at school just by going by who they are is not in the interest of our students, and it does not help foster a learning environment. I'm here to say thank you for being a supportive school district, and I do hope that we continue to do that in Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mary Perner, and on deck is Mike Correll Feichner.
Good evening, President Bueno, Superintendent Van Shaack, Board, and staff. My name is Mary Perner, and I have a little story to tell. For 20 years, I've been a member of a women's walking group. We meet once a week, and whether we walk or not, we always end up at a coffee shop. Over time, yes, over time, new members came and others left. One member who'd been with us from the beginning developed health problems, so when school was not in session, her two grandsons, polite, quiet teenage boys, began to accompany her to the coffee shop. They were there to drive and to provide physical support. They sat off to one side, absorbed, of course, in their screens, while the rest of us had our weekly conversations. A year or two later, I learned from my friend that one of her grandsons had been struggling for years, confused about his gender identity. In his heart, he believed he was meant to be a woman. He became more and more depressed about this and started thinking about ending his own life, and he came close. Fortunately, he finally shared his pain and confusion with his family, and this made all the difference. Gender transition takes time. She acquired a new name, underwent the various procedures required for her change, and, very importantly, she attended lots of counseling. Her family supported her financially and emotionally throughout the entire process. This was crucial. It's been a while since I've talked to my friend, but the last I heard, her granddaughter, a young lady now, was doing just fine, all thanks to the support of an understanding, open-minded family. The moral of this story, in my mind, is parental effort needs to focus on developing trusting, supportive relationships with your kids. Encourage open lines of communication that allow them to feel safe sharing their true feelings with you. If you have to hear what's happening in your child's heart from a teacher or school staffer, then something has gone very wrong. Another just small fact, you may already know this, that in 2022, a Gallup poll said that in the United States, the LGBTQ population is now 7.2% of the U.S. population. These are our friends and neighbors and family. We need to support them.
We have Mike Cornell Feichner, maybe the T silent?
Sorry, I didn't bring a flag. I left it at home. It's a rainbow flag, and it's as big as the Old Glory over in the corner there. Oh, thank you. Oh, okay. Okay. I, Ron is my husband, because he's just married. That's the best we could do for rainbow shirts tonight. We got married on October 24th, 2020, at Asbury United Methodist Church here in Livermore. We find the community so welcoming, my neighborhood so welcoming and loving. I don't see any, I haven't been approached by any of this hate we're talking about, although I am a byproduct of the hate we're discussing about that we do not want to land in Livermore. In high school, we had no such thing. Nobody was out. There wasn't someplace, it was nothing that was talked about. I didn't have a girlfriend. I went to Germany, I had a girlfriend, it was plutonic. I was going to school the overseas program with state colleges and universities. Well, anyway, I did not come out to myself until June 26th, 2015, 2018, I'm sorry, 2017, the second anniversary of the acceptance of gay marriage by the Supreme Court. So that was a flag day for me, and I didn't meet Ron until a year later. So I was at the age of 65 before I came out, and it happened at Amazon where I was working, where there was another young fellow who was there. And anyway, it worked out, somebody said, a gal said to him, "Oh, Jared, I love you. I love you, you're my friend." And he said, "What? I'm gay." He set the example for me to come out, and I came out, and I'm here, and I'm proud that I did come out, and I'm glad I am, and I'm happy in my own skin. All right, and I even have a minute left, and I'll give that minute to Ron.
Well, no, it's okay. Yeah, we've got him on a card.
Yeah, I got a card.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Luisa Gonzalez, followed by Shayna Pete.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I would like you guys to take into consideration adopting the policy of AB 1314. As a parent, I am concerned of the things that are going on behind closed doors, and I, as a parent, would like to know that if my child were to transition, I would like to know, because those are things that need to be handled in my home personally. As a person that's lived within this community for a long time, I don't hate anybody within the LGBTQIA+ community. Plus, my sister and her partner, who is transgender, are in that community, and to say that I am hateful is totally unacceptable and naive. It's very indoctrinated, the things that are going on behind me. For the last couple of years, we've seen all the things come to a head, unfortunately. As a parent, I think that anything that is an adult or sexual material should not be within the schools. When we did a search within the library catalog, that's what I looked for, anything that was adult material or sexualization, that should not be within our schools. Plain and simple, our kids do not belong sexualized. Again, I will say it, we do not hate people within the LGBTQ plus community. Some people, it's really rude, and it's very unacceptable to keep saying that parents are hateful. That's not true. We are not trying to cause any divide. I work within a, I have a career within a profession that is very, very accepting of the LGBTQ plus community, extremely. And to say that we are hateful is not acceptable at all. I will not stand for this any longer. The indoctrination that's going on is not okay. That's all I'll say.
Next speaker is Shayna or Shawna Pete, followed by Ron Correll Feichner.
Okay. Hi, good afternoon. I want to echo the appreciation for you all listening to the public comment today. I know it's a thankless job that you all do, so you are appreciated. I'm Shayna Pete, Shawna Pete, either one works. I've lived in Livermore for, I don't know, 10 years or so now. I'm a member of Asbury United Methodist Church, and I'm here in support of people who identify as LGBTQ plus. I believe in students having a right to a safe and supportive school environment that respects and validates their being, and I believe our schools should be inclusive places. And to be very frank, in a time where I worry each and every day about sending my kid to school because of gun violence and things like that, being able to allow folks to just be themselves and represent who they truly are on the inside feels like a no-brainer. They're bigger fish to fry. I just want to end by saying that it's a beautiful community that we live in, and I want to echo the sentiment that what makes us different from one another is what is one of our strongest assets, and I hope that folks know that this is not a community where hatred will be tolerated. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ron Correll Feichner. Am I getting it close?
Yeah, Feichner, you're good, yeah. You're already on?
Yes, it is. And then followed by Joanne Morrison.
Well, good evening. Thank you, President, Board, School Superintendent, for letting me speak. I am a proud employee, wearing my badge right here, of this Livermore Unified School District. I am a par educator at East Avenue Middle School. Go Dolphins! And I'm also a proud out gay man. I'm married to Mike, as you just heard, and I'm here to basically say that I hope this board and its district I work for as a member of the LGBTQ community will just squash this AB 1314, because it's wrong. As other people said, it's illegal. And some of the language I'm hearing, from speaking from an educator, a par educator point of view, who works with these teenagers every day, no one is trying to turn your kids gay. No one is indoctrinating kids. No, I realize I was gay in high school when I look back in hindsight, and no one turned me gay. No teacher turned me gay, no students, no teachers A turned me gay. I was born gay. That's the way it is. And those parents who can't accept that, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. If your child is a transgender child and they feel they feel safe coming to you, they would. So as an educator, making me be the person I do not want to become an educator to be a gender cop, I wanted to become an educator to help students, to help them realize their full potential, to help them be comfortable in their skin, like Mike said, and accept who they are. So making us be gender cops and telling you that your kid identifies as a male name at school because they don't feel safe telling you is wrong. We should be worried about educating our kids, making them good citizens, being kind, and don't make us be gender police, because that's not what we signed up for. And as people have said, as we all know, transgender and queer youth are more inclined to suicide, more inclined for self-harm, and there's a reason why this bill died in the California State Legislature, the legislation. It didn't go anywhere. As I said, many transgender non-conforming students don't feel safe at home being their true self, and if they're outed by a trusted adult, that's just going to crush them and make it worse for them, and they could run away, they could try to harm themselves. And again, like I say, if your child felt safe talking to you, they would tell you that they are transgender, and if they're not, they don't feel safe doing that, then you need, that's something you need to work on, but don't make us do that for you as educators. We need to support our students, and I want to thank the board for making this a, basically an affirming and welcoming place to work, and I hope we continue to make everyone in this district feel safe, if you're gay, straight, transgender, queer, whatever. So I appreciate all the work you're doing for that, and I hope you continue to do that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joanne Morrison, and that will be our last speaker.
Good evening, President Bueno, members of the Board, Superintendent Van Shaack, and Cabinet. You are receiving demands from some individuals to fashion a board policy based on the provisions of the failed California AB 1314. I urge you to consider your potential legal liability if you adopt such a policy. Let me point out just a few of the laws that might apply. California Constitution, Article 1, Section 1 guarantees the right to privacy of all people in California. This includes children as well as adults. Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 prohibits discrimination and harassment based on sex in any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Federal courts have found that harassment and other discrimination against transgender and gender non-conforming people constitutes sex discrimination. AB 1266, also known as the Schools Success and Opportunity Act, which you're familiar with, requires that pupils be permitted to participate in sex segregated school programs, activities, and use facilities consistent with their gender identity without respect to the gender listed in the pupils' records. If this district were to adopt the language of AB 1314, a transgender or gender non-conforming student would be subject to violation of their right to privacy under the California Constitution by virtue of a teacher or staff member being forced to report their participation in sex segregated school activities to their parents without the student's consent. These students would be prevented from participating in school activities based on the threat of being outed. Such threat would only be imposed on LGBTQ plus students, thereby discriminating against those students based on sex in violation of AB 1266. Students may not want parents to know about their identity because they fear non-acceptance, abuse, banishment, and homelessness. The reaction of some parents could cause their child serious emotional distress and even lead them to suicide. By adopting such a policy, the district would open itself to lawsuits for violation of the foregoing laws as well as others. The district could lose federal funding for programs and could even lose its liability insurance. Please do not listen to the loud minority advocating for this policy. They care only about their political agenda and gaining power over public schools. They do not care one iota about the well-being of students. Thank you.
That was our last public speaker, so we're going to go ahead and close the public comments section. And I want to thank folks for being cordial, civil. It's really important when we come to these things, there's clearly a vast difference of opinion, but when we're able to all sit in a room, say our opinion without fear of reprisal, and we're actually able to be heard, I think there's some validation. And every opinion that's expressed in this room, I know is reflective of a much larger body. So thank you all for both of the opinions, and I think we had someone that was on a non along that subject that was mainly discussed, but I think one of our primary speakers was on something else. So I appreciate everyone being polite and cordial. That's something that's been kind of lost at our national level, so it's very appreciative when we can do it right here in Livermore. Do we have any clarifying questions? I know I have something I'd like to clarify. Anyone else? Okay. Yeah, I would just like to ask Mr. Van Shaack, if you could, inform us, because it has come up a few times, inform the board of any of the district's direction, you know, relative to adaptation of any of the policies that would change the protections offered by the state and/or federal law for our students. I know one of these things keeps getting mentioned, this AB or whatever, but it's dead in committee, so it's not really a law. It was just, it was a failed proposal. But is there anything, any proposal, any consideration for adaptation of anything that could affect the current laws and rights of our students at the state or federal level that we're considering?
Mr. President, we have, we have no intention to bring forth any recommendation of that type.
Okay. With that, we'll move into our correspondence section. This is 8.2B. I'd ask our clerk, Trustee Pruso, if you'd summarize.
We do have a number, quite a few of correspondence, so I've asked Trustee Druin if he would help me with this, and he's going to take the first half.
Thank you. Joanne Duncan, community member, commented asking the board to adopt the language of AB 1314 into policy. Michael Duncan, community member, commented asking the board to adopt the language of AB 1314 into policy. Loretta Sanchez, grandparent, commented asking the board to adopt the language of AB 1314 into policy. Nicole Escavito, parent, commented asking the board to adopt the language of AB 1314 into policy. Tatiana Jansen, former student, community member, commented asking the board to incorporate inclusive curriculum and prioritize students. Myla Snow, community member, commented about AB 13 being a very dangerous bill that has no place in the school system. no place in the school system. Michael 1992, community member, commented asking the Board to continue to support LGBTQ+ community and protect all of our students. Kate Soria, former teacher, commented about a series of speakers asking the Board to violate California law by denying LGBTQ students their rights. Tony Castrochio, community member, commented asking the Board not to dismantle the Livermore High School machine shop. Kim May's parent-volunteer commented in regards to her understanding that AB 1314 was denied at a hearing in the State Assembly Education Committee due to the fact that it is in conflict with California School Success and Opportunity Act, AB 1266. The following board correspondence summaries were added after the agenda was published, but before 4:00 PM the day before this meeting. Formal written correspondence received after the cutoff time will be acknowledged at the following meeting. And I keep going right. Edward Kansa, community member, commented about students that are LGBTQ having rights that supersede conservative rights. Dale Schower, community member, commented asking the Board to uphold the district's current policies that protect students and afford them privacy. B.J. Reynolds Coontz, parent, commented to affirm support for the LGBTQ+ community and explained what an ally means. Mary Summers, grandparent, commented about supporting all student rights and privacy, including LGBTQ+ students. Eddie Burbek, community member, commented about a message of inclusion and zero tolerance for those who act against other groups, including those identifying as or with LGBTQ. Christine Kansa, community member, commented in support of the Board and staff honoring the privacy rights of our LGBTQ+ students. Heather Hammer, community member, commented in support of efforts to include all people, including those identifying as LGBTQ. Linda Morrison, community member, commented about the importance that our schools remain inclusive and accepting, supporting the LGBTQ, and as well as the minority communities in our school system. April Liebham, community member, commented to express their full support of the LGBTQ communities at large and in the city, including the schools, and hopes the Board will continue to abide by California state laws. Catherine Bruner, community member, commented about all students deserving to feel safe and protected at home and at school, and is asking the Board not to adopt AB 1314, which failed at state level. Stephanie Ryan, community member, commented in regards to school board policies not conflicting with California state laws, protecting all students, and to afford them privacy, and to continue to rely on California School Board Association's guidance in matters pertaining to the LGBTQ+ student community. Van Rany, grandparent, commented asking the Board to stand firmly in favor of students' rights to privacy and express disdain to those who discriminate and seek to shame members of the community who simply wish to be who they choose to be and love who they choose to love. Finnegan Butterfield, community member, commented about concerns in regards to AB 1314 and how the bill protects no one, but instead actively harms children. Michael Corel-Feigner, sorry, community member, commented asking the Board to keep homophobia out of our schools and to say no to AB 1314. Julia LeBlanc, community member, commented asking the Board for their support for all students, and that they oppose a directive by some who have asked the Board to adopt a policy based on language in a dismissed bill, AB 1314. Ron Corel-Feigner, sorry, community member, commented asking the Board to keep homophobia out of our schools and to say no to AB 1314. Robert Panas, parent, commented in regards to AB 1314 and hopes that the Board follows a prudent and ethical path of not adopting the proposed policy. Colin Kinland, community member, commented asking the Board to reject AB 1314. Jessica Kinland, community member, commented about the danger of AB 1314. Gretchen Mora, community member, commented about AB 1314 and asked the Board to make a, make, excuse me, to make schools a safe and supportive environment. Tony Neko, parent, commented in support of LGBTQIA+ community in Livermore schools. Anne Brown, community member, commented encouraging the Board to uphold the law and declare their personal commitment to provide a safe learning environment for the LGBTQ+ students.
Nicole Pinklington, parent, commented asking the Board to adopt into policy language that states that a parent or guardian has the right to be notified in writing when a pupil is identifying at school as a gender that does not align with the child's sex on their official records. Audra Cook, parent, commented about the legal risk the district would face by adopting AB 1314, which conflicts with the state constitution. Heather Day, parent, commented thanking the Board for the courage for standing up against a small but vocal minority and for supporting LGBTQ+ students and staffs. Samantha Rodriguez, parent, commented asking the Board to adopt into policy language that states that a parent or guardian has the right to be notified in writing when a pupil is identifying at school as a gender that does not align with the child's sex on their official records. Helen Machuga, community member, commented about a student's rights to privacy being upheld by state and federal laws. Gina Tavares, community member, commented asking the Board to adopt AB 1314. Julie Kui, community member, commented in regards to the need to support the LGBTQ students and focus time and resources on creating a more supportive and inclusive environment for all students. Tara Hamm, parent, commented in regards to adding the issues of parents being informed about what is going on with their children at school to the agenda. Margot and Spencer Platt, community members, commented urging the Board to support students and faculty involved in Humans Against Hate and create a safe environment, both at board meetings and on campus. Kyleen Grippy, parent, commented asking the Board to adopt into policy language that states that a parent or guardian has the right to be notified in writing when a pupil is identifying at school as a gender that does not align with the child's sex in their official records. Julia Esterbrook, community member, commented urging the Board not to infringe on the rights of privacy of LGBTQ+ students and to uphold the district's current policy that protects all students. Sarah Spencer, parent, commented in opposition to those who have asked the Board to adopt a failed state bill, AB 1314. Mei Chong, community member, commented encouraging the Board to protect LGBTQ+ students and reject any language from AB 1314. Adrian Salmonek, parent, commented in regards to the need for after-school care. Sky McLeod, a parent, commented asking the Board to support the current policies that protect LGBTQ+ students and included facts that follow science. Lisa Molina, parent, commented asking the Board to adopt into policy language that states that a parent or guardian has the right to be notified in writing when a pupil is identifying at school as a gender that does not align with the child's sex on their official records. Katherine Kozibianski, parent, commented asking the Board to make themselves clear that they are supportive of the LGBTQ+ students, teachers, and staff. Marcia Steemets Elshizen, community member, commented asking for assurance from the Board to take whatever steps are necessary to protect the well-being of all LVJUSD students, including that of LGBTQ+ students. Bob Johnson, parent, commented asking the Board to provide the resources to assure that there is a safe and supportive environment for all students, including LGBTQ+ students. And that concludes our correspondence.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. And it being, let me get through my, see, it's 9:11. If we could, before we get to the discussion, just take a short break, because I know there's a couple people that need to use facilities and things like that. And again, thank you all for the civility and the decorum that we have conducted ourselves with tonight. Thank you all very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, and we will come back at 21:22.
Recording in progress.
Okay, on your count, on your count, we're gonna start 2124. It's not an advertisement, ma'am. All right, welcome back. For those, we took a break. We're about two minutes past the time I said we're gonna come back. It's 2124, coming back in, and we're at Section 9. These are information discussion items, non-voting items. And I would go back to our superintendent, Mr. Van Shaack. If you could introduce 91, please.
Thank you, President Bueno. We will begin the information discussion items this evening with Jackson Elementary School Report and their principal, Mr. Tom Jones.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Bueno, Superintendent Van Shaack, members of the board, cabinet, and community. My name is Tom Jones, and I am principal at Jackson Avenue Elementary. I'd like to start with just a few highlights. I chose four for this school year, the first being PBIS Silver Implementation Award. We won that, or were awarded that, in both 2021 and 2022. One of the main reasons that we were awarded that for 2022 is that we used behavior data to design and improve our interventions. And we've also used EZCBM data to track the effectiveness of our reading interventions. We have weekly PBIS-aligned whole-school morning meetings, which earlier this evening, I introduced my stingray squad, and they help us lead those. We're also consistently in the top three for school-wide DreamBox implementation. And we led all schools, actually, in the month of April with the most lessons completed on average by students. We're also, what I term, an alternative to suspension school with a focus on instructional discipline. So our goal is to make sure students understand what we expect and help them to meet those expectations through instruction. The demographics at our school site, you can just go ahead and look at those to see our distribution. And I would just make note of the fact that we have 14.5% of our students are English learners. We have 18.2% students with disabilities, which includes students that receive speech support, including articulation. And 28.5% of our students are socio-economically disadvantaged. So that brings us into our school success data, and the CASP, last year's scores, 2022. We scored 64% proficient in ELA and 57% proficient in math. So our main planned actions that would be different from the year prior would be that we're using universal access time, that's UA. We call it win what I need. And we do that four times 40 minutes each week. And students are grouped by their abilities and what they need, and they receive reading support in kindergarten through 5th grade. We also have Sunday, which is a reading curriculum that focuses on phonics that supplements our benchmark curriculum. And we do that five times 20 minutes per week, and that's throughout the school district. So that's a district initiative. For math, we have Investigations 3, but we also use DreamBox, and that's a big focus for us. So our goal is kindergarten through 5th grade, and yes, our kindergartners get on there as well with the goal of minimum of one lesson per day. That leads us to 5, which is where the research is. It shows that the growth will occur, one year's growth in one year's time, if you do a minimum of 5. And of course, the more that you do, the greater the progress. Our attendance rate last year was 92.27%. We'd love it to be well over 95%. And the way that we're doing that is just actively monitoring our students. And we have a CWA, a Child Welfare and Attendance Staff Member, who's able to reach out to families. And really, we're trying to remove barriers and support getting the students to school. We can do that through phone calls. We can also do that through home visits, just to help kids be where they need to be with us. And 76% of our 4th and 5th grade students, those were the ones that participated on the Panorama survey. They reported that they have a strong student-teacher relationship. And our planned action for that is just that culture of, throughout our district, all students are our students. How we do that at Jackson is we have active greetings. We are all waving to the kids. We're saying, calling their name, calling them by name, a simple smile, a wave. And then our Wednesday morning meetings are really, really important. We do that every week, except for when it's raining. But we've even been out when it's just a little bit of mist. We'll still go out and just stand if the blacktop is wet. That's how important it is to us. And then that brings us to student readiness data. So our emergent bilingual student progression. We have 31% of EL students progress in at least one LPAC level. We'd like to see that improve, of course. We want every student to progress at least one level per year. So it's a lofty goal, but one worth chasing. We do that through our designated ELD time, and that's 30 minutes, five times per week. This year, we had a designated block schoolwide, so that was at the end of the day. We'll be doing something similar, but it will be by grade level next year. So, for example, 3rd grade would all have the same designated block of 30 minutes so that students can be placed in the group that they need to be placed in across that grade level. For office referrals, which would include kind of higher-level discipline issues that I would address. Those may be physical aggression, profanity, foul language, unkind language, defiance, those kind of things that warrant a discussion with me. We had 126 of those last year, a lot. Gives us a lot of opportunities to kind of address the students who are having difficulties. And some of those were repeat offenders. So we might have one student, they might have 10, 11, 12 of those referrals. So we analyzed that data using Swiss, and then we're able to provide some targeted interventions. So this year, we were focusing on primarily 1st graders and 2nd graders that during our recess time got a little hands-on. And we wanted to teach them how to be hands-off, and we did that through some Tier 2 support that I think I discuss a little bit later in this report. The EZCBM 3rd grade fluency and EZCBM 1st grade reading, which is also fluency. We had 84% fluent on that final Grade 3 assessment from last year, which was fantastic. And we had 46% proficient on the final Grade 1 assessment, which is an area of growth for us. And again, the way that we're targeting that is our UA time, four times per week for 40 minutes. Same thing there. You see Sunday. We're making sure students are getting really explicit reading instruction in small groups. But we also have enrichment data. So we have students that are reading above grade level. They're dialed in, and that group is able to do a book study. And the one they're working on right now is Esperanza Rising, really, really good book. And then, same thing for our 1st graders. The projects for the year at this point in May, so the projects that we had this year, were that we set a goal to apply for PBS Gold Recognition.
Hit the button? Nope. Oh, it is where? We'll get your mic. We'll get your mic. Yeah. There you go. You're on.
This one's on?
Yes.
All right.
Perfect.
Thank you. That was very seamless. Projects for the year, so we applied for Gold Recognition Award. And Mallory Rachel is a psychologist on special assignment, and she was absolutely instrumental in helping us with that. It's a pretty lofty process. Week to week, they, she worked with our school site. And we're hopeful that we get that recognition. To do that, we had looked at our overall implementation of PBIS practices. And we are tracking progress on how those interventions did. So we had check-in, check-out, which is a student checking in with a teacher in the morning, kind of talking about a goal that they may have for themselves. So maybe, hey, I'm gonna keep my hands to myself, or I'm gonna control my, you know, the words that may come out of my mouth. And then, how do they do? So then they check out at the end of the day. They go there. They have that discussion. So it's just a way to make that connection with a student. The other was that we are going to be, a little bit later this month, soliciting input from families, students, and also from staff on our PBIS implementation. So find out, we think we're doing a great job. I wanna see if others also think that's the case. And if not, what kind of adjustments we need to consider making. Our DreamBox implementation this year, K through 5, was five or more lessons per week, and we've been doing very well with that. We've been in the top three all year. It was pretty funny. I talked in a staff meeting to my team and said, we just wanna do our best. It's not about being first. And they all said, yes, it is. So they were very pleased when I said we were first place last month. So friendly competition, all in good spirit for students achieving in math. We're focused on our professional learning communities. So when you hear PLC, that means teachers are coming together, looking at data, assessment data, and making decisions for students. And in this case, during that intervention time, during the UA block, we have our designated ELD block. Cost has been streamlined for efficiency and effectiveness. And what I mean by that is we have designated roles, so those on the team each know what they're gonna do. I'm the facilitator, which keeps things moving. We have a detailed agenda to follow. We have ongoing notes, which is really helpful for kind of a working memory, and hyperlinks. And all of that maximizes our time discussing students. And finally, our TWIG implementation. So TWIG is our science curriculum that was adopted, and we've been using this year. Our science specialists have been doing an amazing job of first establishing pacing guides and now revising those pacing guides to work along with the classroom teachers. So that collaboration on the next-generation science standards, the NGSS. I'm gonna thank you for your time this evening, and if you have any questions for me.
Yeah, we do. Thank you for the presentation, and we'll start with Trustee Drun.
First, I wanna wish you the best of luck in getting the 2023 PBIS Gold Recognition Award, fingers crossed all around. And then, secondly, I'm excited about using PLCs to look at universal access block. I think that's a perfect space to ask questions and look at and think about who this is helping and who it might be marginalizing, or what's working and what's not. And then, lastly, I think you guys have a pretty rad school garden. Is that correct?
We do have a pretty rad school garden.
Tell us a little about your school garden.
I looked at it today, actually, and I was just smiling. It's in really good shape. School garden's cool in concept, not always cool in, you know, how they're maintained. But we have some amazing volunteers, and we recently were given a grant. So, well, we weren't given a grant, but it ended up, we benefited from it. And we have some folks that are coming out, kind of professional-level gardeners. So it's nice, and you're all welcome to come out and see it anytime. The kids love being in there. And it's so very important for them to go in there and get their hands dirty, kindergarten through 5th, oh, TK through 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Guzman.
Yep, thank you. So I did attend last year one of the Wednesday assemblies, which was pretty awesome. I do have a question about the PLCs. Are they, two questions. Are they done by grade level? And then, are, is there also, that's one question. And then, the second question is, is there an opportunity where they do cross-grade collaboration or vertical articulation, like 1st graders with 2nd grade teachers? How does that work?
So currently, this is our year, first-year rollout of true PLCs, and they're just doing it by grade level. And that's working really well. So we're not opposed to doing cross-curricular grade level. And that could be something that would happen. If it would benefit kids, we would certainly explore that. We do have an instructional leadership team, and we all talk as well. Cost, which I mentioned also, we end up looking at what the PLCs are doing, where students are. So if we discuss a student, we would then look and see what group they're in, how they're doing, help monitor them. So kind of along the lines of what you're asking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Pruso.
Thank you. I am a fan of Jackson Avenue. My daughter went there, and my nephews are there currently. So I've been to a couple of the events with them, and I just wanted to say, this is great. I'm excited to see Jackson Avenue doing so well. And I also just wanted to make a point that today in PCIC, your PTA person talked about the disability awareness. And I know it's something she wants to see at all the other schools, and I was able to attend that before COVID. And it's a really great thing that you do, and I'd love to see it at the other elementary schools where they have a day of disability awareness, where the students have the opportunity to do activities, to find out what it's like to have a disability, to meet other students with disabilities. And I just think it's really great that your school does that, and, yeah, like, I'd love to see that at other schools. I don't really have any questions. Just wanted to say, I think, looking at these numbers, I think it's really exciting, and you guys are doing great over there, stingrays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wong.
So now that we're coming near the end of the school year, can you give us kind of a preview of how well the universal access time has been working? And kind of what improvements you've seen from using, doing that?
Yeah, I don't have the data in front of me, but I think you're just asking for a general picture. So it's really amazing, for lack of a better word, amazing to see the grade-level PLCs. They started, we did three cycles, so we would have a period of weeks, six to eight weeks. We'd have another six to eight weeks after we changed groups up, so three cycles throughout the year. First year, first cycle, rather, teachers weren't super confident. It was, they were hoping that things were going well. They came into the second feeling really good, and by the third, so kind of like getting your training wheels off, you're like, up, I might fall off the bike. And now they're popping wheelies, so to speak. We are seeing, seeing growth. Really amazing just to see the small tweaks. So a group might say, hey, the students have a little bit of difficulty. We're gonna move them into that group so they can focus here. You might have the kids moving up. Because we're doing CASP testing now, our WIN cycle had ended the week of May, last week, May 5th. But 1st grade, for example, says, best question ever, can we keep doing it and make it work through the end of the year? And of course, the answer was, of course. So we're gonna do really good things next year. We're already looking at our Wednesday professional development calendar, and it's very PLC-heavy, allowing that early release time for the teams to come together and plan because it's very time-intensive. So we're enjoying it, and we're putting a lot of effort into it.
Yeah. Do the EL students also participate in UA, or is that when they do their ELD instruction time?
So the beauty of it, district-wide, is that designated ELD time, when they're learning about the function of language and how it works, they are not pulled. It has to be outside that. It's a protected block. So to answer your question, our English learners are involved in the WIN time as well, whatever group they fall in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just one clarifying question. On the Panorama, it's an impressive number, having 76% of the kids have a connection. And you mentioned some of the things. Just not, if you don't have it now, it's fine. So I'd like to be able to see if the demographic data that you put forward, if that number is broke down through that. In other words, are there, is that 76% across all demographics? Or are there any pockets that we could do a better job of, or is it applicable to all across the board? Just for process improvement.
Yeah, it's just an average, and I would be able to look at it. I'd have to look at the reports on Panorama and see what we can get. And Matthew Hart would probably be good to help me, help guide me through that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and look at that, because that's a great area to target. I know you can look at by student as well. So you could look all the way down and see the students that didn't have a connection to support them.
And it's not, I don't think that that's a surprise to me, having been on that campus a few times. I don't have any kids there, but, like, as you do. But there's a cool vibe at Jackson. And I went there, like, the first time was eight or nine years ago. I think it's three principals ago. It's just, it's a cool vibe. It's, yeah, it is. It's a really cool campus. And the fact you have the gardens, and, you know, you're doing a lot of the inclusivity stuff, it's a cool vibe, and so you're doing a good job. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? We have no public comment cards, so thank you very much.
I'll ask Mr. Hanson to make his way forward. In this series, year-long series of school reports, we're getting toward the end. And I appreciate the work that's been put in, and I'm excited to hear what's going on at East Stop and.
Button. No, he got you. Yeah, you're good.
Hello?
Yep.
I was hoping that I would be the first to use a new microphone, but apparently I'll be the second. I'll be the second. Good evening, Board President Bueno, members of the Board, Superintendent Van Shaack, Cabinet, and Community. I could not be more excited to speak about East Avenue. I do want to let you know, first of all, that I'm really grateful to be the principal of East Avenue. Yeah, it's really important to me, and it's just fun. We got great staff, great kids, so it's a real pleasure. I also want to let you know that it is very hard in a short presentation to cover all of the great things we're doing. And so I have no intention for this presentation to be, you know, complete with all we're doing. I'm really going to focus you in to give you a flavor of the energy and the excitement and the good things going on there. So you'll see on my slides a few more things that I'm going to talk about, just in case there are any questions about those things. But I really want to focus in on a few areas that I'm really proud of. I have a clicker. That's valuable. Thank you. Okay, there have been wonderful things going on at East Avenue. You will see some of them listed up there. We recently won a Schools to Watch Award this year. We finished a major construction project, which has not only made our campus fantastic, but has also freed us up to focus on other things. New programs, clubs, student opportunities, some of which I'll come back to later, and some real drilling down on academics and how we're finding out what students know. The one I want to focus here is the recent award, the Schools to Watch Award. And so I can't take a lot of credit for that. It's mostly the staff at the school and the great work they're doing. But it did give us the opportunity to do something really cool this year, which was to head down to a conference last month in Monterey. And we got to share some of our best practices. My science team traveled down with me. We shared what we're working on. And this conference and this award are related to just middle schools. So we then got to travel around into other schools and steal and borrow the best of what they have. And next month, we're going to be heading to Washington DC for the national conference, and so we'll have even more to bring back to our site. So that's been really exciting. The week we went down to Monterey was a week that the entire town lost power because of the rain. So my science team and I got very close together in a hotel that had no power for the entire presentation. Okay, slide on demographics. You know, all I would say here is that we're a very diverse campus, and that is really something that we rely on as our strength. That is where our strength comes from, is our diversity. You can see the numbers there. And our school success data. So you'll see our English language scores, math scores, the percentage of students with passing grades, and our panorama data. And I'm going to say that we're not, we're not comfortable with these numbers. These have to get better. And I would say that largely because every student who is not appearing as proficient in English, language arts, or math is not fully prepared to move on to high school, to move on to college, and to move on to career. So I expect those numbers to go up. And even after they go up, those won't be good enough. I mean, every student who is finishing a year at our school who is not prepared is a loss. And you can see on the right side, a lot of the different strategies that we're working on as a school to make an impact. The one I want to focus in here is our essential standards work. And this is very similar to what Mr. Jones was speaking about with the PLCs. It's under the same model, where we drill down deeply. We look at what students need to know, how we're going to instruct it, how we're going to measure it, what we're going to do if they do or don't learn it after that. And so we've been doing a lot of work on that this year. One of the things that I'm especially proud of, I think my teachers made a really courageous choice this year, and they have been presenting their findings to each other. And so we have, for example, a math team, the Math 7 team, will come in at a staff meeting, and they will say, here's what we said we were going to teach our science students. Here's the assessment we used. Here's how they did. Here's what we did to address those who were not initially proficient. And to do that in front of their peers has been so valuable in terms of spreading great ideas and being brave enough to say, you know, when we look at our numbers, we've got to get better. And so to look at, where did we do well? Where do we still have some work to do? This slide goes over how our English language learning students are doing, our English learners, as well as some of our discipline data, suspensions and chronic office referrals. And so again, I told you, I'm just going to zoom in on a couple of things to give you a flavor of what we're doing here. I want to zoom in on the suspensions number there, and 9.6%, which is a high rate of suspension. This was our rate in the year after COVID. And this is unacceptably high. And this was from '21-'22. And so over the summer and in our professional development this year, and also in my work with support staff I have at the district office, this has been a huge thing that we've targeted. Everything at East Avenue is about connecting students to the school. And when they're sent home, that damages the connection. And so we have done 50 different things to help students make the right choices, to find alternatives to suspension when they make the wrong choices. And one of the reasons I decided to highlight this, if you look over in the actions, you'll see I've written down March 2022 and March 2023. And so this year, our suspension rates have been much better. But I've been nervous all year long. And the reason I was nervous is in '21-'22, we had our highest single month of suspensions. In March of '21-'22, we had 27 different students suspended for 47 days. Now, it may be a crazy decision to say that number as part of my presentation, but as we moved through this school year and our numbers were significantly lower, I never wanted to take a victory lap because I said, that was our hardest month last year. We haven't gotten there yet. And so I don't want to claim that we've made any progress till I see how March goes. And I wanted to highlight this number because it's one of the things that I'm proudest of, of the work we've done this past year. So 27 suspensions, 47 total days of suspension. This year, in March of 2023, we had two students suspended, one day each. Again, I can't take all the credit for that. It has to do with our support staff, and it has to do with our students coming out of COVID. But the degree of connectedness of the students to our school site, because we don't send them away, and we find ways to keep them there, and we find ways to continue and maintain that connection, it's something that I'm proud of. And in terms of what our projects are for this year, so we have a very large amount of projects. And you'll see up there, our essential standards work and attacking our positive behavior interventions to lower suspensions. We have a whole new plan to support students who are not performing proficient, increase counseling services. But the one I want to highlight here, because it's so fun and it captures what we're doing at East, is our new elective journalism class. And so part of what we're doing, along with getting those suspension numbers down, is connecting our students to the school. We need them to be connected, and we're always looking for new programs to get a new group connected. One of the ones I'm proud of is we have an elective class that just started this past year called Journalism. And so those students do pretty much what you'd expect. They make our daily bulletins and our weekly video, you know, news broadcasts. It's a lot of fun. But we also, during construction, discovered that there was a forgotten time capsule from 1987 that had been completely lost track of. It was unearthed and presented to me. And they said, what do you want to do with this thing? And I was like, well, I have no idea. Put it in my office, let me think about that. And so this year, our journalism class has made a short documentary film, and I'm not joking about this, you're all invited to come see it. And this documentary film has different segments that talk about the science behind putting things in the ground in a time capsule, how you would keep those things, you know, still, you know, newspaper clippings still readable in the future. They have interviewed a man who used to farm the land that East Avenue currently sits on. They have interviewed alumni from 1987 and talked about what it was like in the year that the time capsule was placed in the earth. And our current plan is to have our grand unveiling an hour before our open house on May 31. And so our parent and student community will come in, see the film. It is 15 minutes long. We're having trouble figuring out how to get it from the computer it was made on, onto any other computer. And that has me terrified. But we will figure it out. And after the unveiling, we will open the time capsule, and we will take out what is inside and share it with students. That is my presentation. That is also a picture of one of our assemblies with our dolphin mascot. I really appreciate your time and look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Well, thanks for the presentation. We're going to start with trustee Pruso.
I guess I'm going first this time. Another favorite school of mine, my girls went there, and my nephew. I know I have nephews and nieces at every school in this district, so it's not a big surprise. But as you know, my nephew goes to school there. And I will have to say, I got, as far as the time capsule, my brother-in-law is in it. He was in the time capsule. So they were like, hey, Pruso, we know someone. So they called me, and I gave, I got them in contact. I don't know if he's on the video, but it shows how old that time capsule is, because he's really old. He's like my age. Anyway, I think that's super awesome. I love that the journalism class is now an option. And I just love seeing, and we've seen this before at other schools, but you can just really sense it here. I just love seeing this sort of out-of-the-box way of tackling these numbers and thinking of different, unique ways that you can tackle those. And I know that because I've, my kids have been at East, and because I've, as a board member, East has been one of my schools for a while now, I know that it's a unique school in our district. And one of the things that you mentioned is the diversity, and we definitely have that there. And that is something that makes it special. And I think that I have seen, over the course of the last few years, a community really start to come together there. I think that was one of the things that was missing at East Avenue that some of the other schools had, was this sense of community. And I feel like we've, you and your team have really been able to bring that back. And I think it's really exciting to see. And I think it helps, honestly, I think it helps that we're able to, East Avenue was one of, one of our flagship projects. We were able to go in and do the remodel, and everything looks so great. And I think that helps for community. When you come into a school that looks nice and functions well. Anyway, I just think it's exciting. I think, I'm happy to see all of these things that are happening. And it's going to be exciting next year to look at these numbers and see what happens. Because I think, just like with many of our other schools, I think the things that you're doing and that, and that other, that we're doing at all of the schools in our district, we're going to really see some results. And I think it's really exciting. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Guzman.
Thank you. Congratulations on the suspension improvement. That's amazing. I do have a question about the EL students. So 33% went up one level. Do we know by any chance how many years, on average, these students have been in our schools? So for instance, you're sixth, seventh, and eighth, right? I'm curious, like, of those, how many started with us in Kinder?
I don't know if I have those numbers at my disposal right now. I do know that each year, I've been the principal there, we've had students who've joined us, you know, who are, you know, I'm thinking mostly of our emerging, our emerging speakers, you know, at the very low level of English proficiency. We definitely have a few come in each year, and this is their first experience in
In our school system.
In our school system. But I think we have others who've been here a longer time. I'm not sure I have the exact numbers on that.
Yeah, that's one of my questions. And I was also curious, for those that are not newcomers, or, you know, I would just be curious, like, what are the feeder schools they're coming from? And you don't have to answer that, but that's just a question I have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Trustee Drun.
First, thank you so much for presenting. And I will echo trustee Pruso's comments about culture and the strengths at East. A couple points. First, I think it's fantastic that you're empowering teachers in the ways that you are about them sharing their practices. We talked about in education, we have communities of practice where people get together and they try to collectively grapple with some issue. It benefits veteran teachers, it benefits novice teachers in different ways, because veteran teachers get to share. They get to feel that I'm, you know, I'm a professional and, you know, sharing my knowledge with people. And novice teachers get to, you know, benefit from that as well. So that's fantastic. And then I think, second to lastly, I'm really pleased that you're leaning into the areas of need. And I think that's a mark of good leadership, is not hiding from the things. It's, you're here to serve students, you want to identify the areas of need, you want to run towards those as best as you can. So I applaud you for that. And then lastly, on the school success data, under the panorama, there's a thing that says responsive activities, footsol.
I'm sorry?
Footsol, yeah.
Page two, bottom right.
I don't know what that is.
Oh, I'm sorry, footsol, yes. So we actually, so we included the panorama survey data here, but the panorama survey, there was a question from Mr. Jones earlier about how we drill down into that data. And I've found the panorama survey at times difficult to pull apart and get data. We actually also give our own survey every March, where we ask students a whole, a host of questions about what clubs they've participated in, you know, in what ways they feel connected. And so this is another thing I'm really proud of. We noticed that our rate of Hispanic students who were participating in our organized sports, extracurriculars, clubs was relatively low. And I met with our leadership team, and we talked about, you know, we're not, we're not offering what they're interested in. And so one of the questions was, you know, well, we don't offer soccer as a, as a middle school sport, which I see the students playing every day at lunch. And so we didn't, we weren't sure this first year, we could get a soccer program going. But footsol is the indoor soccer, you know, version where you have the smaller ball and it's a smaller course. And so one of the things we found is, and I'm working very closely with my leadership teacher on this, the weeks when we have a tournament and student behavior needs to be good to earn the right to be in the tournament, we suddenly have students who, when I remind them to get to class, get to class. And then the next week, when we don't have it, there's a little bit more lag time before they get to class. And so, for example, we strategically set up our flag football tournament for the last week of May, because this is a time when students tend to be less connected, and we've been doing announcements. You know, we want students to be focused for their grades and for those things. But there's a few students who will play the game to, you know, be the star quarterback in the flag football. So this was one of the things we were really excited about. And just getting the students in, you know, has been a lot of fun.
So what I heard is you need a tournament every week. Sounds good.
Yes.
Thank you.
If there's any funding for several more activity directors, I would accept it.
Thank you very much. Trustee Wong.
I just want to also add kudos about the suspension work that you did. I love that, just kind of seeing the data and then coming up with a plan and really seeing it through. It's great. And then just want to say that since trustee Pruso finally gave up East Avenue, pulled it out of her hands, and I'm now your person, so I'm really looking forward to open house. And now I know there's a movie premiere, so I will be there right and early for it.
Definitely, we'd be excited to have you.
You can figure out how to get it off the computer.
It may be a lot of people watching a very small computer in a classroom, which would take away a little bit from, from the unveiling.
It'll be great, it'll help you with that.
Exactly, yes.
We've got some pretty good videographers here. That's good. Oh, thank you very much. Again, on the suspension thing, because that is a big thing. And congratulations on doing that. And I know it's not simply, I don't say it from the perspective of reducing the number of suspensions, but I see it as the work that went into preventing the suspensions in the first place. Prevention's always going to be the best side of almost everything. I do have a question on the CASP math 2022. I know it's low, just comparatively. Prevention is always going to be the best side of almost everything. I do have a question on the CASP math 2022. I know it's low, just comparatively. And I know at some point, we'll see comparative analysis with all of them, so we're not just seeing them in their little silos. But I'm looking at, you know, some of the demographic information, socioeconomic, some of the drivers for performance. And I know it's a different school. It's an East, you know, East Avenue's middle school versus like the Jackson was last. Demographics, almost identical. And yet significantly less. And I just, like, you know, I mean, I know that's a focus, but it's also a personal focus. I've been on this board for nine years. And I know that the district made a pivot and a shift towards hyper focusing on that, on language and on math, specifically on math scores. And so it's not lost on me that there's a drop-off from elementary to middle school. And I know there's a lot of things, you know, you guys are professionals, but I know we have to fix that. And it's, when you have one-third of the kids proficient in math and you have over half of them proficient when they leave grammar school, that is a concern to me. And I'm not looking to rain on any parade. It's just, we know that it rains and so, you know, I've got the umbrella right behind you. So we have, we've got to do a better job of that. And it's just whatever that takes, I know the effort's there, but we cannot forget that one. I'm looking forward to the premiere.
Yeah, definitely. I just briefly respond, I feel like that number might as well be written on the front door of the school building. I'm not comfortable with it.
Right. All righty. What are the comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Yeah. And I just want to thank both Jesse and Tom. One of the things that I'm proud of this year is the ownership of the data. And there are some numbers that I think are very difficult to deal with when your expectations are higher. And part of the challenge is, when you're setting a baseline, you have to own what the numbers are. And, you know, you can say unacceptable and make plans to improve and hopefully the numbers next year are better. But I think part of it is just their willingness to own what's in front of them. Say, you know, it is what it is and I need to make it better and not a bunch of excuses and not a bunch of, you know, blaming other people. It's just, I think, an acceptance or an understanding that improvement's necessary. So I appreciate the two of them and our other principals as well, owning the challenges that we have. So moving on, nine point three is our LCAP, the next phase of our LCAP presentation in the board. And I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Melissa Thede to do this presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent Van Schak, and good evening, President Bueno and members of our board. I just want to share with you this evening the results of our listening campaign. We got information from our parents, from our students, from our staff. And I'm here to share with you this evening some of the information that we learned from them. Reiterating our district's mission that each student will graduate with the skills needed to contribute and thrive in a changing world is always at the forefront of our work, as well as the ways that we do that through our multi-tiered system of support. I'm just sharing with you the things you've seen a couple of times before that the LCAP is a part of our local control funding formula and it provides specialized supplemental funding to support the specific needs of our unduplicated students, our English learners, low-income students, and our foster youth. So we asked this question through thought exchange. What are the most important things our district should focus on to support all students in the areas of academic achievement, physically and emotionally safe learning environments, and parent and community engagement? When we went to our high school students, these are the areas that they brought forward. And we worked with our high school administrators to make sure that we had large participation with over fifteen hundred students participating. Overwhelmingly bathrooms always sort of rise to the top as an area of concern for students. Topics included bathrooms, stress, homework, lunches, mental health, and the word respect is pretty large on there. We do have plans at the request and recommendation of our LCAP advisory committee to do a deeper dive into the student feedback and work with our administrators to do a more in-depth connection with our students to better understand what their needs are, even if it doesn't specifically align to the LCAP, to make sure that we're hearing what the worries are at their schools so we can work with administration and target resources as needed to make sure that we're supporting what the students are telling us their needs are at their schools. Moving on to some of our other groups, our high school parents in particular brought up areas such as environment, college, bullying, smoking and vaping, safety in bathrooms, again. Overall, mental health and behavior are common themes that you'll see from all of our groups who participated. Middle school parents brought up topics such as bullying, mental health, safety, engagement, and an interest in smaller classes. Elementary parents also interested in smaller classes, music, art, PE, emotional and mental health, and communication were focus areas for our elementary parents. Reaching out to our staff, behavior was a top concern, along with safety, learning and intervention, and the classroom environment. When we asked our principals and members of leadership, mental health, math, PBIS, targeted intervention and training were among the top areas, but you can see the words that most frequently appeared there on the word cloud. The additional slides that you have in your presentation sort of reiterate what I shared with you at the last meeting. So I've included them for you in your packet. I don't necessarily think I need to unless you would like me to go through them again, which just reminds you of what our three goals are and the expenditures from the LCAP that highlight and sort of correspond with the feedback we received from our educational partners in our community. What I can say is that the consistent themes over the last several years have involved mental health and interventions and instruction. And we do have targeted LCAP funds to reduce class size, to reduce, let me just show them to you really quick, LCAP goals. I want to, that first goal about increasing percentage of students who graduate college and career-ready. These are the things that we're spending out of the LCAP, which offers smaller class sizes for some of our schools, counselors, district and site staff, TOSSAs, training, after-school programs, support for our music program. That second goal, oh, here you go, smaller class sizes, PD for our foster youth liaison, CWA staff, counselors, support for unhoused families. And that third goal about enhancing parent and community engagement, making sure we have opportunities for childcare so families can attend meetings, translation and interpretation, platforms for communication, and parent education opportunities. This is our roadmap. We're now in May. We've completed the listening campaign. We are soon meeting with our county. And once they give us the thumbs up, we'll be posting our LCAP online, requesting questions from our community, which we will provide a written response to. And the LCAP will come forward to you again in June, first for a public hearing and the second time, hopefully for approval by the school board. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. I will start with Trustee Pruso.
I know this probably, this may or may not fall within LCAP, but I think it's interesting that for high school students and parents that bathrooms is like the number-one concern. And it feels like something we should be able to alleviate.
Absolutely. So we have all of the comments from the students. And our plan really is, in the fall, because at this point with just a few short weeks left, is to connect at our high schools, do some planning now so that in the fall, we can go in with a group of students and say, talk to us about what's going on here, or things that we have heard. Help us understand that and what would make it better. I mean, it's everything from, sometimes we lock bathrooms during class time and only have certain bathrooms open because that's where we have supervision to be able to, you know, monitor the coming and going of students during class times. Sometimes there is what the students are reporting, smoking or vaping in the bathrooms. And so we're trying to really find solutions to all these problems. I want to have the opportunity, though, to have more than a randomized thought exchange. I want to really sit down with students and have a conversation and hear, what is it that you really, really need? And once we have that information, then we'll try to figure out how we can support those needs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Drun.
Just, I had also circled bathrooms. And the question is, like, what does that mean? Is that, and I'm assuming that there's more to that, like bathrooms, there's lots of different things, be it, you know, not being able to access it to, they would like more toilet paper to, lots of different things. So I'm assuming that there's data about that.
There is, absolutely, based on the feedback that we received. But ultimately, like I said, we're going to sit down with the students and really have some back-and-forth dialogue to really make sure we can better understand.
Good.
Because it's been, bathrooms has been on the surveys forever. And so, yeah, we want to engage in a more personal way with our students to better understand.
When you have a high school student, you'll understand.
Yeah. I think
It's a thing.
But I think about, I think about bathrooms. My friend moved from Tracy High School to work at St. Helena. And you walk into the bathrooms and the bathrooms don't have that kind of corrugated stuff that you can't write on. It was like polished wood. And it made me think about, what does it say about the school that they have, this is what their bathrooms look like, that they trust students are going to take care of it? And, you know, it's a thing that I think about. I'm not suggesting they have polished woods in the bathrooms, but it says something to the students that, I don't know, I'm not sure. It says lots of things. And so does bullying, like thinking about, is this a concern? Is this a problem now? You know, for who is it a problem? There's just lots of questions. I mean, I'm glad, I'm glad that this is collected. And I look forward to hearing about how it's unpacked. I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you for the work.
Thank you. Trustee Guzman.
Good, thank you. Yeah, I'm always looking to see what the parents respond, what they deem important versus especially our high school students. And there seems to, I see kind of a disconnect and I get it because I have a high schooler and we're both speaking English, but we don't understand each other a lot of the time. But one thing I do see is that in the high schools, they bring up, you know, mental is pretty large and it's very small on the parent's side. And knowing that we have a wellness center at just one of our high schools. And I know there's been talk and conversation about having it at the second. But I'm curious, like, do we have somewhat of a plan on addressing that or?
We do, we do have a plan. And we have one of our school psychologists, Lisa Hannan in Danner, who worked to write and submit a grant to help us expand access to wellness centers throughout our high schools and middle schools. So we're looking to expand access for all of our students in middle and high school in particular.
Thank you. Trustee Wong.
I just want to highlight the bullying issue in the middle schools because this is also the top thing I hear from middle school parents. And I'm now a middle school parent once again. And one suggestion, and I also recently heard from our high school students that the freshmen coming in from middle school contribute a lot to kind of the hate speech and behaviors on campus. And they would like to address that at the middle school before they come to high school. And so this year, I know our Humans Against Hate Club at Granada has started going to middle schools to make presentations to them about hate speech and that kind of thing. And that was sort of the model we did with vaping, where the high school kids went into the middle schools and, because those are the people who really understand and who the middle school kids, they have some credibility with them. And so, you know, we might consider using that model to help with the bullying stuff in the middle schools.
I think that's a great model. And in fact, in our cabinet meeting earlier today, our superintendent did say that that's one of our top areas to focus on is this hate speech and bullying. It can't be tolerated. And so we really are working at ways, under his direction, on how are we going to improve this for our students in the future. So I think that's a great suggestion and I appreciate you recommending it.
Yeah, I just think the high school students will be much more credible speakers on this than an adult coming in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Doing a song and dance or something.
A smart, smart strategy.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't think it's a mystery that when you look at the high school students, bathroom, food, lunch, eat, all seem to be concerns. But the bathroom one, you know, my kids graduated a long time ago. You know, they've already given us grandkids. And that was, we had a thought bubble, but it was the same concern. And, you know, I'm still coaching at the school, at the high school. And one of the things, I know it's a radical kind of perspective, but what the kids have come and they've told us, they said, you know, Coach, I know we can't do these things at school, but the kids work around the rules all the time and they're vaping in the thing. So we don't feel safe when we go into the bathroom where they're vaping. He goes, what if we just gave them their own bathroom and they went in there and they vaped? And then we could use all the other bathrooms? I mean, I know that, you know, I'm not advocating for kids to do bad things, but, I mean, we're dealing with the same issue. I mean, it's been over a decade, it's a decade and a half. And it's like, kids who don't want to be around problems tend not to go where the problems are. And if it's in the bathroom, it's a shared space, that's a horrible thing. And so, you know, I mean, there has to be some type of way to get around it. Because I know all the privacy things and I've just seen so many renditions of trying to fix it and correct behavior, and many of those have been successful. I just, it's hard for me to just sit by and look at, probably all of us, a high school kid saying bathrooms the single number-one issue that comes through on a thought bubble. That ought to just be like a no-brainer. That ought to be like a safe space, you go in there, do your business, and that's that.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Good. It is interesting how the more things change, the more they remain the same. You know, this is twenty years ago, that was their focus too, was, you know, we don't like the food at lunch and we don't like the bathrooms. There's too many people in there, there's not enough stalls, there's not enough bathrooms. And this has been, you know, twenty years. The students wanted single-use bathrooms, you know. And I used to point out, there's two thousand of you. So I'm not sure exactly how that would work. But that has been sort of a recurring theme over the years is they don't like, they don't like the idea of public restrooms. They want sort of more what they have at home. And that's been a challenge to try to recreate that, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. So we will move on to nine point four, which is our adult education report. And I would like to welcome Sarah Wach, who's already here and ready to roll.
I'm proactive. President Bueno, members of the board, Superintendent Van Schak, members of the cabinet, thank you. I am here tonight to speak to you about Livermore Adult Education. I spoke to you earlier this year in my role as principal at Vineyard. I am also the principal here at Livermore Adult Education. And before I get into my report, I would like to say two things. Number one, it's great to see democracy in action. It's hard and it's tiring and I thank you for your service. I appreciate that. I don't get to come, I could come more often to the board meeting, but I don't come so often. So I appreciate what you do. And number two, I wanted to reiterate what Tom Jones said in support of Mallory Rachel. She helped Vineyard as our PBIS coach this year and she was invaluable. We had a transition year on our PBIS team at Vineyard and she kept us afloat. So I just wanted to publicly give her kudos for the work that she did because it was very helpful. All right, so Livermore Adult Education. And I know that you put me last year at ten o'clock, so I won't talk too much, but I'll try to be fast, although I love to talk about adult education. So this year in Livermore Adult Education, we have, here's some of our highlights. With the pandemic, our childcare. So we have traditionally provided care for the young children of our adult students while they attend class. And in the past, it has been referred to as babysitting because that's basically what it was. And we had very kind, loving, responsible people taking care of these children. But with the shutdown of our childcare during COVID, we took this opportunity to sort of rebrand and reopen in making sure that we are offering our young students, the students who are the children of adult education students, high-quality, early childhood education. And so we have our classrooms open and fully staffed. And it's just a delight to hear them and see them. And our parents have really been vocal at their appreciation and their support. Our adult education is trending up. So after the pandemic shutdown, adult education enrollment across the entire state was down. It is trending up and our school is trending up as well. We are not going to quite reach pre-COVID numbers for enrollment this year, but we will next year if things consider, continue in this way. We have made the decision to continue to offer both in-person and online instruction. It is challenging to find quality, effective, enthusiastic instructors for virtual education. But we, as a program, learned during the pandemic that online instruction just works for some of our, for some of our students. They don't have to pack their kids in the car and come to class. They don't have to find childcare. They don't have to, you know, we have, in the morning, we have a large older population who attends our online classes in the morning. So they don't have to drive, which makes their adult children happy. So we are, we remain committed to providing both in-person and online instruction. And this year was a good year. I'm hoping to have a more solid online program. was a good year. I'm hoping to, to have a more solid online program next year. We continued our partnership with the Youth Build Project Hope. And this, as of today, our adult ed program, we have three high school graduates this year and seven GED completers who will be, who have earned a high school equivalency certificate from the state of California. This is up from, I think we had four total last year. So we're, we're very excited about that. We started quite a few new projects this year. We have a computer literacy class now for non-native speakers of English. And this is something else we learned during the pandemic is that many of our students just have challenges with technology. They haven't had the exposure. They haven't had the opportunity. And with our school district going more and more digital, it's important that our parents in the district can access illuminate and they can access Schoology so that they can see their children's report cards and their attendance records and all those good, important things that active parents do. So we started that class this year. So far, it's going well. We have a new vocational ESL early childhood education program. So this is a program, again, specifically for non-native speakers of English to earn a credential through an organization out of Washington DC that allows them to be associate preschool teachers. So if they were to go the more traditional route, they would need to go to the community college and complete 12 units at the community college to get the same level of credential. We found that our adult students, because of their season in life, they may have several small children. They may not be in a position where they can go to school and do lots of homework. That the community college route is challenging for some of them. So we have started this, this alternative pathway to education in early childhood for our adult students. And we are collaborating with our curriculum department to develop parent leadership via the Latinx Grant. This was a grant that was awarded through Eric Swalwell's office. And in fact, we, adult ed and parent liaisons and Sarah DeGroot from Community Engagement and one of the members of the Del Vow staff, we were all started a three-day professional development today, working specifically on this. And so we're excited to work together and to support one another in our joint mission, although we do it at different places. And we don't always know exactly what we're doing. So this is, it's been a great start. Here is our breakdown. 62% of our population is female, 35% male, 3% non-binary. The majority of our students are between the ages of 25 and 49, which is, you know, quote unquote, working. Those are working adults. The, the data that is collected by the Department of Education Adult Education Program identifies race and ethnicity a little bit differently than what we do in our K-12 school. And so we, they separate Hispanic Latino out of racial identity. So this is the breakdown of our, it's really late. I'm sorry, I can't talk. I'm glad I said, don't hold dinner for me tonight. So not surprisingly, the majority of our students are Hispanic Latino. We have, and the largest, largest group of students that we serve are our English language learners. So 67% of the students that we serve in adult education are English language learners. 7% are high school equivalency and 4% are the integrated education and training. That's the early childhood program I was telling you about. 5% are adult basic education. So those 5% are adults who came in specifically with the goal of getting a high school diploma or a GED, but tested below a ninth grade level in reading and math. And so then that puts them in adult basic education. 4% of our students are pursuing a high school diploma. We do have an ESL citizenship prep class. It's for people who are in the process of becoming citizens. We help them prepare to take the test. And I'm, there's our new digital literacy class. And we are currently serving this year, so far, we have served 53 children of our adult ed students. So in our early childhood programs, we have been able to serve 53 little people while their, while their parents went to school. So we're very excited about that. Here's the breakdown between in-person and hybrid versus virtual. So clearly, it, it is weighted towards the in-person, but there's still a significant amount of students who are attending hybrid or virtual only classes. So I do think it's important that we maintain that offering for our students. So next year, our goals for next year, we are going to continue to recruit and develop high-quality instructional staff. Adult education is a little, everybody is challenged recruiting and developing high-quality instructional staff. Adult ed is a little bit extra challenging because not many people go into K-12 education or go into education to be adult educators. But once we, once we pull them in, they stay, you know, come to the dark side. But, so we're working on that. We want to, like I mentioned, we want to increase and improve our online offerings. And we want to continue our collaboration with the curriculum department, with the Latinx Grant, and also working with the program that is housed in the curriculum department that is sponsored by the Mexican consulate. It's called INEA. It's a program that Spanish-speaking adults who were unable to finish school in their home countries can attend school online and earn a high school diploma that is issued by the Mexican consulate. So it, it goes all the way down to primary school. So they come in, they take diagnostic tests and they, they have support. We have a staff member who supports that, them as they pursue their high school diploma in Spanish. And we want to strengthen our partnership with the Human Resources Department. We want to identify some creative strategies to help the Human Resources Department to work on staffing challenges. We know as a district, some of our most difficult positions to fill are our duty supervisors and our lunchroom assistants. And I know from working in adult ed that we have the candidate pool here. So we need to, I, I'm looking forward to working with, together with, with Amy Robbins to find a way that we can help develop a pathway for our Livermore families to gain employment in our schools. And then provide them with additional pathways, stepping stones. So many of our adult ed students have higher degrees, you know, we could, you know, I, you know, we have mechanical engineers and veterinarians and physicians and dentists and lawyers and accountants. But we also have students who did not have any or very limited educational opportunities in their homeschool, or in their home country. So we can use, I'm hoping, my goal is that we can use the district as a platform to help those folks who are re-establishing their professional lives as a stepping stone, but also for our, for our students who don't have, haven't had that educational opportunity to get into the workforce and to, and to get the training that is going to help support them as they support their families. And so that is our year. Any questions?
Thank you very much. We have no pub, no comment cards, so we'll close public comment. And we'll start with trustee Drun.
So thanks so much for presenting. I think adult education is an aspect of the, I don't know, public education system that I don't know a lot about. So I'm pleased to hear all the awesomeness that you're doing. I think that's, you know, it's, it's interesting hearing the approaches that you're taking. My brain was like, I'm really pleased that you're addressing the whole child and it's like, no, the whole human. And I think that you kind of answered the last, you know, the, the last portion of your presentation about making connections, like making connections to Lost Pacetus. I think about other programs like CTE that are trying to build pathways. And I think that that's a fantastic opportunity and a way to help, help the students get to where they want to be. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Yeah, I remember your report from last year. And I remembered, I think at that time, the entrepreneurship tract was new program. So that was great. I'm also really excited to hear that the new project is computer literacy for non-native speakers and the parent leadership with the Latinx Grant. During 2020, when we first shut down, I was an online instructor for Spanish-speaking families on digital literacy. And some of them were accessing online through their mobile phone. Everyone had a different device, literally on the phone with people for 20 minutes, just trying to figure out how to establish a Google email or whatever it was. So to see that that is now being embedded as part of the curriculum here, and also to hear how you're helping both those that are more educated with those that are less formally educated, just gain economic mobility in this country. It's exciting. So thank you.
Thank you. It's exciting to me, too.
Thank you very much. Trustee Pruso.
I think just an echo of what these two said, but I just wanted to say one thing. I think it's such a great, smart idea to partner with Human Resources to get some of those students into our district as, as employees. I think that's what a great idea, great assets that we have right here in our community. Good job.
Thank you.
Very much. Trustee Wong.
That was a very comprehensive presentation. I don't have any questions, but I just want to appreciate that every time I hear you speak, you, your passion for adult education is so evident. And it's really means a lot to me because my parents never learned English in the time they were in this country because they had three little kids and there was no childcare back then for adult ed. And I just, whenever I hear you speak about that, I just think, you know, how different their lives might have been if they had the opportunity to learn. So I appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Final discussion item, please. All right, our final discussion item of the night will be presented by Ms. Kim McNeely, who will present us with the bond update.
You will be happy to hear a brief bond update. So, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Van Schak and Cabinet, as always, my pleasure to present a Major J Bond program update for you this evening. I want to start with the last project, the largest project in the Major J Bond program, which is completing this month. That is the pool at Livermore High School. You can see we're a little bit ahead of schedule and it's been mentioned a couple times, which is kind of cool. Yay. Jazz hands. So just because it's familiar to you, and I will go quickly through it. Just a reminder, because I always like to look back as we celebrate sort of the completion of something. We started the pool portion of the project last summer, and this is how we looked in the fall of, of last year. And this is as of last week. You can see we're putting the finishing touches on the pool and we will be turning the project over to the campus complete the end of this month. So I know the board is well aware, but for the community perhaps a little bit, it's, it's pretty exciting to, to be finishing. So I want to talk just briefly about the continuation of the facilities master plan projects this summer. As the board, again, is aware, we're moving into construction document preparation for the Maryland Steam and Renovation Project. We are continuing to work on the Granada High School and Livermore High School project. We have finished up the schematic design and we're moving into design development over the summer and into the fall. So you'll have an update on that later this year. Again, the, the probably most immediate piece is, again, you'll recall that we're moving forward with the Maryland project and the first phase of that will start in spring of next year. Continuing the summer projects for 2023, the asphalt repair, seal coat, and re-stripe Phase Two project is moving forward this summer. That will be work at Christiansen Junction, Mendenhall, and Granada High School. The heating, ventilation, and air conditioning replacement project, Phase One, begins Junction this summer. And Phase Two, just the first campus will go this summer. That's Christiansen Middle School. That will be followed up with, that actually is replacement of 25-plus-year-old heating and air conditioning units, which is a, a nice update to our campuses. The bulk of that work will continue in summer of 2024. We are still experiencing long lead on, on some of that equipment. And so we are ordering equipment very early, but it is taking us 12 to 14 months to get equipment into the district. So we'll continue that in 2024. Fire alarm Phase Two will happen this summer as well. That's Christiansen and Junction. And then very happily, we're beginning the energy efficiency upgrades that we've been discussing in the district. That begins with LED lighting that will start this summer. That project will actually continue through most of next school year. That work will happen after hours, so we don't disrupt instruction any more than, than necessary. As always, we tend to end on an update to the matrix for you all. This includes a little bit of historical information. A lot of earlier projects have been removed, but more recent projects are still on. And then updates with the work we're doing this summer and the work that will continue into the 2024 year as well. That information will, as you know, be posted to our webpage once we've presented it this evening so that the community has a quick summary of the status of projects and the work that we are going to be doing. That concludes my comments this evening. I'm happy to answer questions. As always, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We have no cards. We'll close public comment and we will begin with trustee Pruso.
Just one thing that the Pruso household is very excited about the pool.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I have a, through my work at Sand State, I've worked with, we're redesigning a, you know, 19th century building. And I just have a deep and abounding appreciation for the work that you do. Facilities is not necessarily glamorous, but it really has an impact. It, it helps students, it helps teachers, it helps staff. It's just, the work that you do is really important. So I just wanted to appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Trustee Wong.
I want to second the excitement for the new pool because my son was one of the last LHS swim teams to use that pool as it was on its way out. So very excited for the kids to have a new pool. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No comment. Great work. All righty. We're going to go into our discussion action items.
Okay, just have a couple of quick ones. And this involves a revision to the current board calendar and also an opportunity for the board to speak to next year's board calendar. So just as, as to recall, we've decided to move the June 27 regularly scheduled meeting up one week to June 20. And so we are looking for approval from the board to revise the calendar so that the last meeting will be the 20th rather than the 27th. And so that's, public vote is required for that. And so I ask you guys to do that.
All right. Just a quick question on that. Is, just given some of the process stuff, is there a way that we could do a workshop, at least a proposed workshop on the 30th? Because we have some deadlines that we're trying to.
Certainly. That's, if that's a good data, we could, we could schedule a workshop just about anytime we want.
Okay. All right. So that we don't need that?
We don't need, we need 24 hours notice. You know, I'd say, you know, if, if you come up with a date sooner than that, it's obviously better, but.
Right. I just wanted to give us a date that was prior to the June 1 deadline as we have.
Exactly. Yeah. A workshop, we could add a workshop without, without the requirement for a public vote.
Okay. And it was just so we can finish off the process. And then just a clarifying question on the June 27 change to the 20th. Will that give us enough time to get the may revise from the governor and actually have the data in hand and procedure that allow us to vote on it?
Ms. Fiskus has assured me that she can pull that together.
Okay. Because that's always, that's been a challenge in the past. Because, because of the state side, sometimes they're late with the information.
Yeah, it's really the, the gap between the, the meeting prior to that, which is the 13th and the 20th will create a challenge of getting that all together in a week's time. But since there are so few agenda items, other agenda items on the, on the last meeting, we're confident that we could pull that off.
Okay. I entertain a motion on that then.
President Bueno, I move to approve the revised board calendar for the 2022, 2023 school year.
I second that.
So a motion by trustee Drun, and it's been seconded by trustee Guzman. So a motion by trustee Drun, and it's been seconded by trustee Guzman. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, if you'd call the vote, please.
Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Trustee Guzman?
Aye.
Trustee Drun?
Aye.
President Bueno?
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
I appreciate that. And the second piece is the 2324. And so just a reminder, our normal structure is 7:00 PM meetings on Tuesdays. We try to space them out through the year, avoiding holidays. We have board workshops on Thursdays. And so essentially what we did for 2324 is take the, the structure that we've had for at least the last six years and put that into a document that you've had an opportunity to see before. It's very, very similar to this year's board calendar. And so we're asking the board to approve next year's board calendar as well this evening.
Thank you. And again, on that one, given that we're doing it in advance, would it be good practice to at least propose and just place the workshops? I'm looking again, because of our window of, that operational window there in May, we have one on the 16th. It would be to have one on the 2nd, 16th, as well as the 30th. We may not use them.
Yeah.
But it would be for that purpose.
So we just add, we would just add a second workshop following the May 21st board meeting, so the 30th.
And the 2nd.
The 2nd. Okay, so earlier in May rather than.
But it would be both.
Okay.
So we could, we may only use two, but we'd have them there.
Preschedule them so that, okay.
So keep what is proposed, and in addition, put one down. I would propose putting one down for May the 2nd and May the 30th.
Okay.
That gives us some opportunities.
Give you a window, okay. And I'll ask for the, the motion to be to approve the board meeting calendar with revisions that stated to the, to the May workshops.
Okay.
I move that we approve the 2023, 2024 board meeting calendar with the revisions that we just stated.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in support of superintendent's recommendation as amended by trustee Guzman and seconded by trustee Drun. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, if you'd call it.
Trustee Drun?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Trustee Guzman?
Aye.
Trustee Wong?
Aye.
President Bueno?
Aye. That motion carries unanimous. Move it into our consent. I think there's 14 tonight. So I'd entertain a motion if someone would like to move them in their entirety. We have no cards on it, so we'll close any public comment. And if someone would like to move them all, it's going to be 11.2 through 11.15.
President Bueno? I move that we approve consent items 11.2 through 11.15 in their entirety. Second?
Motion by Pruso, and it's been seconded by trustee Wong. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'd call it, please.
Myself? Oh.
Yes. Question on the motion?
Can I make a statement? Or do I, is it just questions?
Is, is it relative to the motion or on a specific item?
No. Never mind.
Okay. Can we do it after the?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. There's no question. There's a clarification, but it'll follow the vote.
Myself? Myself? Aye. Trustee Guzman?
Aye.
Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Trustee Drun?
Aye.
President Bueno?
Aye. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much.
And I'm not sure if this is, I just wanted to say that we've approved several out-of-state conferences, and I think that it's important. I think that doing that work professionalizes the institution. I think it's important. We, we heard several presenters today talk about going to conferences, you know, the principal from East. And I just think it's important and to try to support that. That's all.
I agree with you. And, and towards the transparency, these are modest expenditures, you know, for, for professionals. They tend to be pretty non-glamorous to people in the going to get certified in something. So, yeah.
Yeah, they share a room with no power. It's pretty cheap.
Well, I don't know what, but, okay. And these are consent resos. I think there's five or six.
No, there's two.
No, well, there's a, well, some of them are running because it's 78 through 82 and then 83. So it'll be 078 through 083, if we'd like to move them in their entirety for the calendar year.
I move that we.
It's 078.
07, resolution 078 through 8, 083 in its entirety.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by trustee Guzman to move the consent resos in their entirety for the current fiscal or calendar year. And that has been seconded by trustee Pruso. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, if you'd call, please.
Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Myself? Aye. Trustee Drun?
Aye.
Trustee Guzman?
Aye.
President Bueno?
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. And we didn't remove anything for separate discussion. So we will start off this evening. Trustee Guzman?
Yeah, I'll keep it very short. I'm just, I'm attending a lot of end-of-year events and awards, and I continue to do more. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Drun.
May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. The month of May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7th, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10th, 1869, which I didn't know until recently. So, so happy May to everybody. I attended Joe Mitchell's Give and Take, which was amazing. If you didn't attend, it was fantastic, great work. I'm not sure they'll do it again. I think that it was fantastic, but I think it was a lot of work. So kudos to those that made it such a success. I, I, as well as President Bueno, attended Rancho's 50th Year Celebration, which was fantastic, great job to them. They even had a teacher that opened it there, which was really rad. We attended the facilities board workshop, which was informative. Went to the Olympian lunch, which was inspiring. A couple of us attended the Smith fire drill, which was, you know, it's late. It was an experience, a positive experience, I think a learning experience. So good job to the Smith team. And then lastly, went to the Risk Takers and Dream Bankers events, met Edwin the Robots, and had a fantastic time. So great job to the robotics team at Livermore High School.
Thank you. Trustee Pruso?
Just a few things that I've attended. The Algebra Task Force, the Green Engineering Academy did some bridge. They built bridges, they put the brick on. It was really funny. Mostly fun and funny. When this bridge didn't work, there was more applause than when they did. So I thought that was fun. Also, there was the LVEF Festival of Orchestras. I wasn't able to attend, but I thought it was neat that we had the Rancho 50th Anniversary Celebration. And today I was able to attend PCIC, which is always a good time.
Thank you very much. Trustee Wong.
So this is, May is a great month for my family because it's AAPI Heritage Month and Jewish Heritage Month, and we're both. So yay for us. So this time of year, a lot of events, I'll just list them. Rancho's 50th Anniversary Celebration, Maryland Avenue Spring Festival, which is great, always smells really good with all the food. Olympian Scholarship finalist luncheon. I, several of us attended the IB NYPD 10th Grade Personal Project Presentation at Granada. Also attended the Smith Emergency Pickup Drill. I attended the Tri-Valley Selpa Award Ceremony with Superintendent Van Shaack and our special ed team. The Board's Facilities Workshop is great. I also attended with a lot of our staff the AXA Administrator of the Year Award. And our, the Christensen Principal Brian Sharman was awarded Middle School Principal of the Year. And it was an especially fun event because the power went out and came back like 10 times throughout the dinner. So that was pretty exciting. It became like a phone light dinner, which is very romantic. The, if you don't mind being in a room with like hundreds of school district people in the dark. I attended the end-of-year meeting for TV TIP, our teacher induction program, always very productive and efficient. I also attended the Dreammaker and Risk Taker event. This past Saturday was Community Service Day in Livermore. It was so great to see all the volunteers out at a lot at our school sites. And then this coming Saturday, Quest Science is back. When spring comes, Quest Science comes back out of hibernation. And there'll be a Stockman's Park from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Their events are amazing, like 800 people from all over the area come for it. And then lastly, I just want to thank all our speakers tonight, all the people who came and spent a couple of hours in here and got up to give their three minutes. And especially the students, the courage they have. And they're always so inspiring and have really insightful words for us. So I just want to give them a special shout out.
Thank you very much. We all went to, there's many events, the Dreammaker, Risk Taker, that's kind of an event where there's kids come from all over the valley. Some exceptional kids that I was fortunate enough to sit at a table with our, our metal shop fabrication folks, machine shop folks from over at Livermore High School. And they are, that is an integral program that is really supportive of the green engineering. They're able to fabricate their own parts and do a lot of the stuff over there. It's a life skill. So it was really nice to hear firsthand from those folks over there. Ag Day, which is great for some of our elementary kids. I know that, I mean, there's a lot. I mean, a couple of the trustees here walked around cowboy boots and hats and turkey platters. We went to the Smith Drill because student safety, we say it, but there's some things that we do on the back end. A lot of them aren't mentioned. We happened to get a chance to be able to walk through one of our elementary schools while they did a, kind of a multifaceted drill, emergency pickup. It was well-coordinated. Mr. Manier and the whole staff put a lot of time into it. Well done. And they gave us some opportunity for some input and things like that. And on the safety issue, you know, there's a lot of discussion. And I'm going to mirror what many of my colleagues appeared, said today relative to the opinions. You want to hear everyone's opinion. There's a lot of passion behind some of the issues that are striking us. But it comes down to student safety. This is a, in my opinion, singularly focused agenda. It's for students, the education of students within this public agency. Student safety is paramount to that mission. And we're going to make sure, every rendition of the board that I've been on, this being the most recent, has put that at the top because nothing else can be accomplished unless you have student safety. So I know there's a lot of students that are maybe worried about that. I'm not worried about it. I think that we're diligent in that effort, and we will remain there, speaking just as one person. But I'm not going to try to make it like I'm on a platform. I think everyone, I've never heard anyone on this board ever say anything that was contrary to student safety or taking an alternate way to get there. We're concerned with that, and we're diligent. And there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes to ensure that. Equity, inclusion, hard stuff, and software, all kinds of things. And then also, trustee Drun mentioned, some of us went to the, there was a breakfast for some of the Olympians, proposed ones. That event happens to be one of my very favorite events here. It's for a top athletic scholar in each of our comprehensive high schools. So they're equally nominated, male and female athletes with great grades. And they come forth on May 15th. This year, we're proud to have this event at Livermore High School and the new gymnasium that was community-supported. And it is a tremendous event. I might be a little biased on it. There's a couple of folks in our family actually got that a few years back. And so it's a great example just of like leadership and kids that are going to work towards some things. And there's a little Hall of Fame component that comes off of that. Some people who go out in the community, go out in our world. One of the mission statement here is to thrive in an ever-changing world. And when you come back and see some of these Olympians, when they come back, the things that they've done, and they enter them in the Hall of Fame, it's, it's extraordinary. I'm a strong believer in athletics and what that does to keep our kids engaged in the academic, which is the primary focus. So thank you very much.
You guys did a ton of listening tonight, so I'm going to say goodnight and tap out.
Nothing further. 2258 adjourned. Reminder, mics and video are live.